I'm starting the meeting.
We're going to start our meeting this evening.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Ms. Alvarez? Here. Ms. Aziz?
Here.
Ms. Bora?
Here.
Ms. DePain?
Here.
Dr. Peck?
She texted me. Her son was hurt at the... At, um, we play soccer?
Soccer.
Yes, and she didn't know if she'd be in the ER in town.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Piero?
Here.
Ms. Ratner?
Here.
Ms. Sharma?
Yeah.
Mr. Tufano?
Yeah.
Mr. Zeichner?
Here.
We have a quorum. In accordance with the provisions of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law, the Monroe Township Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published, an electronic notice provided by having the date, time, and place thereof posted October 25th, 2024, and September 12th, 2025, at all schools, on the district website, Home News Tribune, Cranberry Press, and filed with the Clerk of the municipality.
Closed session resolution, whereas the Senator Byron M. Byer, Open Public Meetings Act, NJ SA 10:4-6, at six sequential, the act provides that the Monroe Township Board of Education may hold an executive session from which the public is excluded to discuss matters that are confidential or are one of the nine subject matters listed, Section 12B of the act. And whereas that the board hereby declares that its discussion of the following subjects will be made public at a time when the public's interest in disclosure is greater than any privacy or governmental interest being protected from disclosure. Now therefore being resolved by the Monroe Township Board of Education, that the board shall go into executive session to discuss the following items. Additional items may be determined and announced as needed. And the two items are pending or anticipated litigation in matters covered by attorney-client privilege and matters involving employees and terms of their employment and contract.
Motion to go into second? Into closed session?
Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Okay, we'll go into closed session until 7:15 where we'll come out to the public meeting. Thank you. Good evening again, everyone. We're going to, uh, start the rest of our meeting. I have number six approval of minutes. Uh, can I have a motion to approve?
Second?
For both that are listed on the agenda? Or just the Executive Board, Public Board of Education meeting, August 27?
So the first one.
First one, thank you. Roll call, Ms. Allen. Was there any discussion? I'm sorry, any discussion about this? Roll call, please.
Ms. Alvarez?
Yes.
Ms. Aziz?
Abstain.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Mr. Piero?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
Yes.
Ms. Sharma?
Yes.
Mr. Tufano?
Yes.
Mr. Zeichner?
Yes.
Ms. DePain?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Is there a motion on the closed session meeting, August 27th, 2025?
Second.
Motion and second. Is there any discussion? Ms. Allen, can we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Ms. Alvarez?
Yes.
Ms. Aziz?
Abstain.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Dr. Pe-- oh, sorry. Mr. Piero?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
Um, yes, abstain on the portion where conflict exists.
Ms. Sharma?
Yes.
Mr. Tufano?
Yes.
Mr. Zeichner?
Yes.
Ms. DePain?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much, Ms. Allen.
You're welcome.
Um, tonight, our student board members report. We have our returning student. I would like you both to give your names before you speak, and then, uh, I know you're a senior and the gentleman is a junior, but please tell us a little bit about yourself and then go into your report, just for tonight, if you don't mind.
Of course, don't worry. Um, hi, my name is Tiana Patel. I'm a senior this year in high school, and I'm hoping to pursue a law degree once I graduate from college and continue on to law school in the US, but I'm also looking at colleges abroad in the UK. So I guess that introduces myself, and I'd like to pass it over to Aditya before we begin.
Hi, everyone. I'm Aditya Aurora. I'm a junior studying at Monroe Township High School. Um, I like to play guitar. I like playing cricket, and I want to pursue a degree in computer science when I attend college.
Okay, great. And with that, we'll begin our student board member report for tonight. So, beginning with Barclay Brook. Barclay Brook has had a wonderful opening to the 2025-2026 school year. It is so wonderful to have the classroom and hallways filled with smiling children excited for the year of learning ahead. On Thursday, September 11th, we held our first school spirit day. Students and staff were invited to wear red, white, and blue in recognition of Patriot Day. The school day began with a moment of silence to remember and honor the sacrifices made by the men and women of our country, as well as those made by the veterans and military. It was truly beautiful to see the school filled with patriotic school spirit. Barclay Brook's Back to School Night will be held Thursday, September 18th. We look forward to meeting the families for this informational evening. Barclay Brook's Great Kid Initiative is up and running for the new school year. They use the acronym GREAT to represent the core values of growth mindset, respect, empathy, acceptance, and trust. We held an assembly for our grades one and two students to review the great character traits that they expect from the students at Barclay Brook. They were truly impressed with how many students remember the acronym from last year. They truly look forward to a great school year ahead.
Now, moving on to Brookside. Now, moving on to Brookside Elementary School. They had an excellent start to the school year. Third grade has done an exceptional job transitioning to Brookside from Barclay Brook. The fourth and fifth grade students are continuing to meet their expectations and have settled nicely into their new grades. On 9/11, Brookside School acknowledged Patriot Day with a special dress day. It was a patriotic day with so many staff and students wearing red, white, and blue. Brookside also held Back to School Night yesterday night and held their picture day today.
And now we'll move on to Mill Lake Elementary School. Mill Lake School is off to a wonderful start. The staff and students are excited to be back and have jumped right into the new school year with great enthusiasm. This year's theme, Dreams Do Come True, inspired by fairy tales, has set a positive and magical tone. To kick things off, staff proudly wore the school's brand-new Mill Lake is Great baseball caps on the first day of first Friday of school, showing off their school spirit. On September 11th, the students dressed in red, white, and blue to honor Patriots' Day and to pay tribute to the heroes. We have many exciting events ahead. Back to School Night will be held also this Thursday, September 18th, followed by a fun pajama day for the entire school. In recognition of Pediatric Cancer Awareness Month, the Student Council is organizing a Go Gold for Childhood Cancer fundraiser throughout September. All proceeds will benefit Happiness is Camping, a summer camp for children with cancer. Picture Day is scheduled for Tuesday, October 8th. On Wednesday, October 23rd, they are thrilled to host the very first Family Fun Game Night from 5:00 to 7:00 PM at Mill Lake School. This year, one of Mill Lake's primary school goals is to foster executive functioning skills in the young learners. Through activities such as Family Fun Game Night, students will practice decision-making, adaptability, and critical thinking, skills that help students stay focused, navigate challenges, and succeed not only in schools, but also in life. The Mill Lake School community, in partnership with Woodland School, is looking forward to an amazing school year filled with learning, growth, and joy.
Now, moving on to Woodland Elementary School. Their first day of school went very smoothly and was a major success. They also observed Patriot Day on 9/11 with thoughtful activities and reflection. Also, in collaboration with MTHS Homecoming, Woodland is joining in on the excitement by celebrating Spirit Week from September 15th to September 19th. They also had a Back to School Night yesterday night where they welcomed families and provided insights for the year ahead. Zero Period Band will begin on September 22nd, and Zero Period Chorus will begin on September 25th.
And now we'll move on to our middle school. On Wednesday, September 17th, 15 middle school students who were part of last year's History Happened Here program were invited to attend a pre-screening of a mini-series about the American Revolution. The mini-series was produced by famous historical filmmaker Ken Burns, who discussed the movie with the students. NBC Nightly News anchor Brian Williams and NJ Governor Phil Murphy were also in attendance at the event. The trip was the culmination of the students' year-long involvement with the History Happened Here program and was held on the anniversary of the writing of the US Constitution. The History Happened Here program was coordinated in Monroe by Kristy Vizaki, MTMS Grade Eight teacher. Thank you for your contributions. September 10th and 11th were the school's picture days. All students had an opportunity to have their photo taken for the yearbook and their ID cards, which are now required at MTMS. MTMS also held a very successful sixth and seventh grade Back to School Nights, and the eighth grade Back to School Night will be next week on September 29th, and information will go out to parents next week. A date was chosen for our sixth grade Halloween dance, October 24th. Information will be sent to sixth grade parents soon. MTMS is proud to announce that they have been selected by the US News and World Report as a top middle school in New Jersey, ranking 87th out of 1,432 eligible middle schools, putting them at the top 6%, while also being the fifth-largest middle school in the state. We thank the hard work and a dedication of the exceptional staff and the students, district supervisors, as well as the collaboration of the parents to make this possible.
Now, Oak Tree Elementary School. They had an amazing beginning with kindergarten orientation on August 2nd. On September 3rd, the first day of school, all students met their new teachers and classmates. They also held an ice pop social on Patriot Day sponsored by the PTA. Back to School Night is on September 18th, and they look forward to meeting all parents and guardians.
And now finally, we'll be moving on to the high school. For a happy start from Monroe Township High School, the school is happy to announce that they have three semifinalists for the National Merit Scholar Program this year: Nirne Batatarya, Arav Kumar, and Anya Patel. Best of luck to them on their application process to hopefully becoming a National Merit finalist and scholar. Attention seniors and senior parents and guardians. Class ranks and beginning-of-year transcripts are now available through the Genesis Parent Portal in the grading section. Congratulations to every senior, and the school is immensely proud of its senior class and wishes it the best of luck in the future. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Your reports are very informative and keep everybody up to speed on what's going on with all of our schools, and we really appreciate that you're coming here and doing that for us. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, our committee reports. We will be reporting on commit-- and Mr. Gunkelman's not here tonight. He asked if we could have committee reports read at the meeting, so I asked all the committee chairs to do a very brief, five-minute committee report about what happened, highlighting all of the top things that we discussed at all the committees. So, Ms. Ratner, would you like to start?
Yes, and thank you for allowing it, and I will try to keep it under five minutes for, just for you. Um, so I have two reports to give now, which I remembered today. Um, so the first is the Legislative Advocacy and Community Engagement Committee. We met on September 9th. The Board of Education members present were myself, Ms. DePain, Dr. Peck, Ms. Aziz, and Ms. Sharma. District administrators were Dr. Lehman and Mr. Maralda. The committee focused on three different topics, so just a quick highlight. The first was a review of the district website, and they shared some of the modifications that have been made, including the addition of a new section featuring our partnerships, including those that we currently have to feature and spotlight some of them, as well as ways to get involved, as well as an update to our advocacy section. We also discussed the calendar feature, and we're going to go more in-depth into that next month. Then our second topic was the discussion about the creation of a district advocacy calendar to help ensure that as a board and as a school district, we are advocating at the appropriate times for certain things during the year. So this way, as prepared as we can be, we know what's coming and we can plan ahead for that. And then finally, we had a very brief discussion about current legislative issues. There really hasn't been a lot of change because the legislature has been on summer break, but we sort of just hit one or two highlights there.
Thank you. Did you want to do your second report, Ms. Ratner?
Oh, I do. I just know if there are any questions.
Does anybody impose to that, because you could finish your reports?
I might go over five minutes for them both, though. So then the second one was the Citizens Advisory Committee, which also met September 9th. Board of Education members present were myself, Ms. DePain, Ms. Aziz, and Ms. Alvarez. The district administrators in attendance were Dr. Lehman and Mr. Maralda. It was really wonderful to see our committee members back here after we had taken a break for the summer. During the meeting, Dr. Lehman and Mr. Maralda provided a summary update about our strategic plan, as well as some additional details about a few of the points that are mentioned in the strategic plan, including full-day kindergarten. And Dr. Lehman shared with the committee that we would be getting a more detailed presentation that would be available at tonight's meeting.
Thank you very much. Mr. Piero?
Building grounds transportation. Uh, we met on September 10th. Present was myself, Ms. DePain, Ms. Bora, Ms. Ratner, Dr. Lehman, Mr. Take, and Ms. Marty for transportation. First, we talked about the Appelgarth Roth Grant Project, the roof projects, electric service, HVAC. Administrators provided us with an overview of the roof projects, noting that they're near substantial completion. There was some structural support issue with the 1960 roof wing that they had to make some changes to to fix that. They're also investigating a part of the 1983 building roof, which will likely come back with a structural revision and a related change order as well as that, because once they open a roof, sometimes they find a little more damage than expected, so we have to make the changes. That money was still in appropriation with the Roth Grant. There was money for changes because they anticipated them. The HVAC work continues within the building, and due to the delay with the electrical service, it provides the HVAC contractor with an opportunity to work on feathers on a daily basis without having to restore the billing after every night. So, uh, since the kids are now at the middle school, the HVAC guys, instead of open roofs because they were going to work at night and closing roofs, they're there constantly trying to get this done before we open the school. I believe Dr. Lehman's going to talk about the part that had shipped. And, um, let me go into ESAP. So the ESAP project administration provides with a two-week look-ahead report from Honeywell. Progress on the lighting upgrades has been a little slow, and administration has been pushing Honeywell to increase staffing to get this work completed. Uh, work for the HVAC projects, however, may be proceeding ahead of schedule as they're attempting to complete the boiler installations and undertake some HVAC work in the coming month. As for the solar project, Hess is pursuing interconnection approval from JCP&L, which they anticipate receiving by the end of December 2025, and at that point, they are looking to approximately six months to complete the solar installations on site, Mr. Take advises. Uh, we talked about the use of buildings in the annual summary. Administration provided handouts, which include accounts receivable statements for 2425 school year, as well as a three-year look back at the quantity of use of building events. There is a 28% increase in the quantity of building events during the past three-year period. The facilities department reduced the three full-time employee positions this year, which is tough balancing the work they need to do within their budget, along with all the building needs. Administration recommended that policy committee review the rate schedule and utility costs since we're only charging like a rate for security, custodian, whatever, but we don't take into account the use of the building, the electricity, the gas, the water, the sewer. That's all coming out of taxpayer money. So, um, we asked Mr. Take to go back with administration and review the rates to make sure that, you know, we're not, the district itself isn't paying for outside agencies taking money away from the kids. So we want to look at this and see where we're at with this. So they were supposed to talk to administration, and then we will look into policy and make any changes that are adequately needed to make. We also talked with transportation with Ms. Marty for an overview. She said it was generally a successful opening of the transportation department. There were a few issues with some bus stops that will be investigated to determine if changes are necessary. Also, five contracted buses will be using our radios. They're going to provide them with so they could have direct communication with the buses. Uh, she said there was some issues with some of the kids that go out of district with their bus stops, and she said they were talking to the commission, and this week they should hopefully be able to resolve them and get the bus stops to where the children need them to be. And then, we also had a post-meeting discussion in relation to PSCNG. They advised the district that Brookside School's gas meter was not functioning properly, and administration with Energy for America confirmed that the usage may be accurate, however suggests we're going to engage with a company, Troy and Banks Utility and Telecommunications to challenge the utility bill once they figure it out. What they're saying is that the gas meter wasn't properly working, and we were being billed for way less than the gas we're using. This company, Troy and Banks, has been used in the past in what they are, is like a broker firm. It doesn't cost us anything, and they'll actually be able to dispute once public service tells the district what we owe them and how long this has been. This group usually comes in and does their own research to try to dispute it and get our bill lowered for us. But as of right now, we don't know because we haven't been giving the, how much gas or how long it was. We weren't given an answer yet. And, uh, Dr. Lehman, if you want to throw in the Appelgarth and anything else with the gas thing?
Sure. So we're excited to report that the missing part, or the part we've been waiting on, is en route to Appelgarth School. We were notified that late this afternoon. We don't have any more details other than in terms of like exact arrival dates, but what will happen next is the electrical contractor will update the installation schedule, re-coordinate with JCP&L for any opportunities that they need to have them come on site and do the power on and shutdown of the building. And as soon as we have all those appointments coordinated and the electrician updates his installation schedule, we will communicate an anticipated return date for Appelgarth students, but, you know, we certainly have been anticipating information about when this part is finally en route to the Appelgarth, and we got word that it's en route today. So, um, it could have been on the truck at the beginning of the week, and we just found out today. It could have been put on the truck today. Again, we, uh, were notified by the contractor that they confirmed that it is en route and on the truck on our way to the Appelgarth School. Thank you.
Ms. Alvarez has a question. Go ahead.
Pete, you said to bring the facilities use policy to policy committee? Is that the, I just want to clarify.
Yes, administration talked about--
The use of facilities?
Looking at it and see with the rates, the schedule, the use. There's a question Mr. Take brought up about, um, like say a group comes in and says they're having 1,000 people, and he sends them the rates. They then send him an email back saying, "Oh no, we're only having 500 people." Reduce the rate, and then 1,500 people show up. So it's actually, um, so I suggested that I know some other districts do that, is they provide a counter. Like, I'm pretty sure East Brunswick does it. If you go to an event, you say you're having 1,000 people, you have to pay for the person at the door, and they count 1,000 people, and once you get to 1,000, they advise security and building, and that's it.
So just to clarify, this is about what he was saying. It was just, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we were going to have it go to finance and then to policy. Did you want us to go straight to policy first?
No, we were going to find out. He had to get us the prices and the adjustments to let us know where we stand and what we should be charging.
So I think, and I did think a little bit more about this after the committee meeting, so I had some more thoughts here, but I think one of the things that we all agreed on during the meeting was that we don't charge a security deposit, and we definitely should. So that should probably already become part of the policy, that we do a percentage of the total amount as a security deposit, because we've been in situations where they said 500,000 people showed up, and then when we went back to them post-event, we, there was no way to make them pay more, but if you had a security deposit, we could have used that. So that was definitely something discussed during the committee, but, um, one of the thoughts that I had post-the committee meeting was that, like you mentioned, there's been a 28% increase in the number of events that we're doing. I think we need to bucket them into, um, what is it that we are doing to which organization? So these paid private events, how much have they gone up versus our shared services agreement events and, you know, other tier-one, you know, institutions? So, because that'll give us an idea of where are we spending our tax dollars as an institution? Is it on those private events or on these? And I know we, I did mention it briefly during the committee, and we are obligated through the shared services, but there's no harm in keeping tabs on what we are spending because we know the amount we've gotten through shared services, and it is easy to keep tabs on where we are just for our information purposes for a future shared services agreement when we have to, God forbid, go in for one, we know what it costs us.
Hold on, Keith.
And, um, one more thing that I wanted to say is I thank God the part is on the way, so that's good news, and, um, there's light at the end of the tunnel for us.
And, and one other thing, you know, we spoke about a lot of different things with that, and we talked about last year of them moving like Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts and stuff from the elementary to the high schools, whoever have security here, and they could use a classroom here. And, um, I don't know what happened with that, but it was never, nothing was ever done. We talked about it. It was supposed to be done, and I believe the groups were never advised. Nobody ever said anything to them, so it's basically, uh, somebody dropped the ball last year, and we are still continuing to use all the schools when we could centralize and, you know, save money. People are here, security's present, and that's something that we brought up, but it never happened. So we need to look at that again.
Right, so I, I think I had brought that up at the meeting because I had to put in for Girl Scouts, and because I know what we're trying to do, I had put in for the high school. I don't know if somebody in the facilities office is then reaching out on the back end to try to move them, but I do agree, like, if we can streamline that, where they're only able to use the other schools, I guess as an exception to the rule, instead of being able to apply, I think that would help cut down. My other question regarding the facility usage, and I believe that we had brought this up last year, there are a lot of times where, um, certain organizations, and I believe it's a lot of the in-town ones, because the ones that are out of district are usually a one-time, two-time things, they'll put like a blanket request in for, you know, six to nine every day for the gyms, for sport, or things like that. And my understanding is whatever is on that facility uses, usage calendar, we need to provide services for, is there a way for us to sort of ensure that it's only being used, like, I guess the calendar is only showing it when it's actually being used as opposed to somebody reserving all of these rooms for all of that time that we are then possibly spending money that we don't have to do?
I, I think the reserves for them are rec, and it's like sports. So like rec basketball or whatever they reserve, like lacrosse, they reserve across the street for certain hours, and whether they practice or not, I'm not sure how the scheduling works, but I know that, my understanding is the blanket ones were basically like rec programs, rec basketball, because each team could practice or whatever, so then they have to make a note of where they're going to practice and how they're going to do it. But I, I'm pretty sure most of the blanket ones, as far as I know, were for rec sports.
Can I, I just wanted to mention something too, because I'm, being at that meeting and just listening to everything, with the amount of people that say they're coming and then so many, the cost for the liability is really going to go high. God forbid something happens. So I really think we have to be strict with that, strict with the policy to make sure that we don't have any more. I'm sure there's capacity signs all around the schools and the facilities that, you know, this room holds so many people, and I don't know if the state can come in and say, will you, you know--
I think it's more of--
Fire marshal, or somebody can come in and say something, so we have to stay to that.
They're within building capacity.
Yes, we have to stay.
It's just they're, they're telling us that they're only coming with so many.
Right.
So say the PAC is 2,000.
Right.
They'll say they're having 1,000. He'll send them a price. They'll come back and say, "Oh wait, we're only going to have 500," send us the price, and then they have 1,500. So they're still under the capacity, but that's why I suggested that, you know, we need to, and it's a cost to the taxpayer. You know, it's lighting, water, electric, gas, it's-- And as everybody knows, electric's gone up pretty high, so--
Just to, just to clarify, because I don't know if there is a liability issue above it, but I believe if there's an outside organization, they have to provide their own--
Their own tip of insurance.
Yes.
There's definitely an insurance piece, just to comment on a couple of things. The reason the number of people attending an event is important is because we base how many of our staff we would employ to either clean the spaces, provide security, and things like that. So if it's underestimated, we would have potentially not enough security. We certainly have, be understaffed in terms of post-event cleaning and things like that. So that's why the, how many people you're requesting to use the building for, that's really the piece. We do have room capacities and building capacities, but that, uh, that would become an issue if you're trying to squeeze 1,000 people in this room or something like that, and that would be managed on-site at the, at the event. If it was done on the front end, we wouldn't let you use this space if you were going to try and use it with too many people. Uh, second question regarding the blanket use. I agree, probably for the most part, there, you know, the Woodland Gym for rec basketball for, you know, whatever period of time and things like that. In those cases, though--
In those cases though, we're not staffing that with our security, right? That's the rec they are monitoring and using their own staff to ensure the safety. And we had that exchange in protocol, we went through that process and had that expectation with them. So we still have a staff, our custodial staff onsite, you know, on a Saturday, you know, for an example, all day to make sure the building's open, the AEC or the, you know, HVAC is running and then do the post cleanup. But in terms of, you know, our security team and things like that, that's a different piece. But it's worth looking into. We would be constant, we are constantly, you know, managing that event calendar. If it was, you know, so-and-so's team for the 45 minutes, a one-hour practice is on, then it's off, then it's on, then it's off, I think that's not realistic, which is why the chunking of those events makes sense. Because they can internally move the teams around, who's going to be where, you know, shift practices from morning to the afternoon and things like that. So that's why the, you know, chunking makes a total, total sense in terms of either on our management side of things. If it was a consistent issue of we're showing up on Saturday and we're not being notified that everything's canceled, we're handling that. And not to say we've experienced that, we have a very good relationship. But that would be where my concern comes into is if we're showing up and now the building's empty. Those chunked events are overwhelmingly occupied by, you know, what we expect them to be occupied when they're on the calendar. But we can dig in and see if there's, you know, a specific time of year or whatever that's, you know, can be tightened up a little bit. But I think it's worth the conversation on the policy to make sure our costs reflect the increase in utility expenses and we can better have a way to recoup expenses when either more people show up and we need to have our staff spend extended amount of time here cleaning and/or so we can avoid putting ourselves in a safe position where we feel like we're, we are unable to provide the security that we expect to provide the group and ourselves and protect our building. So that's why I think we need to revisit this. It's not about preventing certain groups and making things so people can't use it. It's really about how can we support our facilities, protect our facilities, protect the people who are renting our facilities from, you know, themselves, you know, for to sake? And also protect the taxpayers from spending money that could be recouped, you know, through these fees, so.
And we also talked about, because right now I believe our facility uses for anybody. You know, we could even have a discussion as whether it should only be for groups and residents of Monroe Township. A lot of school districts do, you know, it's township.
Right.
So...
So that maybe could be done in policy?
Yes.
I just had a separate thing aside from the facilities about transportation that, I know Mr. Pero had mentioned that there were requests from parents and I did see that we were copied on some of that correspondence. I know we've received additional requests. I guess my question is, are these stops being changed based solely on the requests from parents? Is there, so I know like in the past there was, I don't know if it was security, if it was the police department going out to ensure whether or not they were safe. And then are we reviewing all of them or only if a parent expresses concern?
So they've, any of the requests that have come in are being vetted or have been vetted. And the last I spoke to her, which was late yesterday afternoon for an update specifically on this, she was caught up. We did receive another one today from one of the magnet schools, you know, asking to review the bus stop. We have sent the director of security out to review different bus stops and we're also, she's also been out looking at bus stops as well. So each one is being taken seriously and significant change, you know, many, many, many changes have been made. But she's vetting each request just to make sure, you know, it's based on what they're, you know, representing in terms of a safety issue or something like that. Yep.
Yeah. She also told us that they're using a new system this year, so it automated some of the bus stops and then parents called. So she said that's what they were reviewing that, you know, with the new system, put the child on the bus here, well, the parent calls and says, well, they got picked up here, which is closer. And she said that that's a lot of what they were doing was the parent complaints about that and that they were going to look at it.
Yep. And reverting back to previous bus stops and things like that. Yep.
Mr. Payne, if I may make a comment. So I heard this after the BGNT meeting, so I just wanted to give some kudos to Ms. Martyr. What I heard was this year's initial few days, the delays in buses was one of the best managed. So, and this was her first year starting the year. So Dr. Lehman, feel free to add anything, any data that you have, but I feel like I want to give a credit for that.
I don't have the time committed to memory, but I can say the high school was a couple minutes later than their normal dismissal. And that's kudos to them to make sure everybody got on the buses. The middle school was 10 minutes earlier in terms of their first day dismissal than previous first day dismissal, so that's outstanding. And why that's important is the high school buses overwhelmingly go to the middle school. The middle school buses overwhelmingly then distribute themselves to the elementary school. So any delays, especially in the first day of school, stack on top of each other. So the fact that the middle school was 10 minutes earlier than their traditional first day of school dismissal, put all of the elementary schools at a significant advantage than they typically are at the end of the, at the end of the first day of school. Not to say there weren't delays and/or students that we had to double back and drop off at their stops and things like that. That was a standard first day hiccups. Second day, we had a tremendous, you know, increase in efficiency. And as we moved through, again, we're tweaking stops where she's still doing it, you know. Like I said, we received one email today, so she will review that if she hasn't already and, you know, vet that and take a look at it. And like I said, that's an East Brunswick Magnet School, you know, request. And a lot of the magnet school runs, when you have students, because they're there for four years typically, if someone graduates, that stop maybe no longer needs to exist because they may be one of a couple of students there. So that's why we see a lot of potentially more movement in those because they're not necessarily those community neighborhood stops that will always have kids at the same location every year. It's much more specific and targeted.
My compliments to the transportation team for a smooth start. Thank you.
Next committee report, Ms. Alvarez.
The policy committee met also on September 9th. We discussed 0143 and the committee decided we needed some legal feedback on the provisions to that policy, so we did not move it forward to the agenda for tonight. And then the other discussion we had was a discussion on how we would chunk the policy wellness check, the comments and highlights that we received back from New Jersey school boards, and how would we discuss those and in what fashion? And we came up with the schedule for that. So that will be starting at next month's meeting.
Thank you.
I have two reports. I'm going to start with the curriculum. I'm going to skip the attendance for the sake of time. The committee was given a presentation by Dr. Higgins and Mr. Eric Lowry of the middle school of a pilot MTMS/MTSS behavioral program that was run last year for groups of students from every grade. Seeing the success of this program, it will now be offered to all sixth graders this year. This requires parent and student consent and the hope is to continue in one more grade level in future years, in more grade levels in the future year. The committee then reviewed seven curriculum documents that were worked on over the summer. These documents were presented in detail by their supervisors, Ms. Russ, Ms. Dr. Rozell, Mrs. Gasko and Mr. Snyder. The documents were drama in acting one, ESL math transition, which is a brand-new course which will help bridge the fundamental gaps faced by life students, limited or interrupted formal education students, to do better with math subjects required for graduation, Holocaust and genocide, honors geometry, introduction to computer science, which was formerly known as computer programming, honors piano, which is also a new course being offered starting this year, and rhythmic movement. There was some discussion on the enrollment capping of the introduction to computer science class and the committee requested more clarity from the administration on the availability of this class to all interested students. We currently run two sections of this course and this is the most basic of the computer courses being offered to our students. Next, the athletic director, Dr. Brandica, gave an update on the fall sports and how well the things were going across the district. He also shared the MTHS emergency action plan, which was up for annual approval. No changes have been made in this document since last year and once approved tonight, it'll be shared with all concerned staff members and coaches that are expected to follow it. Next, Mr. Marietta, Mrs. Marietta Roella shared update with the committee about the special education Medicaid initiative, also known as SEMI. The committee was relieved to hear that despite the reduced compensation from the state this year, which is expected, our district services to the students will not be impacted in any way. The business office was given credit for their foresightedness on the SEMI eight cut and in putting lower numbers on this revenue item in the 2025-26 school year budget. Lastly, the committee discussed the work that needs to be done for a curriculum, from a curriculum perspective in preparation for full-day kindergarten. Dr. Lehman shared that for all core subjects currently being taught, our curriculum documents will not need any change as they meet all relevant standards. The teachers will get extra time to do more with core concepts for the students once we transition to a full-day kindergarten. Mr. Snyder shared that a curriculum document for phys ed and music will be prepared over the summer for full-day K as those are not currently offered in kindergarten in Monroe. And the staff has already started professional development to work towards a full-day schedule and will continue to do that at every opportunity through the course of the year. And that concludes the curriculum report.
Any questions, Ms. Bor? No?
The next one is more shorter. I'm going to share the finance committee minutes now. The committee reviewed the bill list for August for a total of 1.147 million. The amount was typical for the lean months of summer and addendum was expected before the meeting and I think the addendum we have brings it to over $7 million. The committee then reviewed the attorney fees for the month of July for a total of There was a discussion about the Oprah fees in this bill, which amounted to 57% of the attorney invoice totaling to $11,307. The committee, through discussions, made the following recommendations. We would like to urge the community members to be more responsible in using the Freedom of Information Act. As a first step in their approach, they should reach out to the district administration and board president for more information that they're seeking. If they're unable to get what they're seeking, then they can use their right to Oprah information. When submitting a request, they should be more specific so that the data being shared is more manageable and the sheer volume does not bring up the cost. The committee forwarded a request to the policy committee to review regulation 8310 and revisit the part about cost of Oprah. Specifically define the threshold when the costs will be transferred to the requester and define how those costs are going to be calculated. Lastly, the administration was tasked with obtaining an RFP from the few tools available in the market that are used by organizations like us to handle Oprah requests. That'll help alleviate the internal resource time and attorney fees for the service. We hope to continue this conversation in future committee meetings. This concludes the finance committee report. Any questions?
Any questions, Ms. Bor? Yes, Ms. Ratner.
I just wanted to ask, I don't know, Mr. Weiss, if you might know, other districts that you've worked with, how do they typically handle their Oprahs? Is there someone in-house who does it and then it's sent out? I guess if you have any, because I know we were looking to see surrounding districts, but if there's anything that you have.
Yeah, sure. So I'm not aware of any program that's out there that responds to Oprah requests. And quite frankly, a lot of times it's, it's legal calls that are made in terms of whether or not something is to be released or not. So if there is a program out there, I'd love for you to find it because Oprahs take a lot of time from my office and they can be tedious. With that being said, to the extent that you have staff, I will say this. Monroe Township Board of Education receives an inordinate amount of Oprahs. Many of my school districts that I represent and that my firm represents do not receive the volume that Monroe receives. When there's volume like that and when there are, you know, thousands of pages that are potentially responsive to an Oprah request, it takes staff time. And in addition to that, if something is denied, it potentially opens the district up to liability. And so it's a balancing test. For routine Oprah requests, some of my districts handle all of those in-house. And it's only when there's one that's kind of out of the ordinary or different that then it gets handed over to our office. I could tell you that the volume that has been in this district, and I've had the discussion with Dr. Chanley and Dr. Lehman along the way, that it is taxing the business office, who's the custodian of records, and it's taxing the superintendent's staff. And so as a result of the sheer volume and the unique nature of some of these requests, more or less, I think many if not most are coming to our office. There is some training that can be done, but a lot of times, given the unique requests that come here, staff is not necessarily equipped to respond on their own. Again, we can do it on an as-needed basis. And so it's really up to the district staff to determine whether or not they're comfortable with the request and/or whether or not they seek additional input from us. Sure.
Anybody? Yes?
Can I just add to that? So Mr. Weiss is right that there is no way to avoid the attorney fees. We definitely, when it comes to legal matters, we don't want to be open for litigation. We do want to run things that need to be run by the lawyers. It's just about taking care of all the, you know, manual aspect of it. Like he said, when the volume gets too much, we send things over to the attorney because our business office is swamped. I do want to highlight that Monroe has, there is a precedence of asking the requester for money. It happened recently. And when the Requestor was told how much Oprah would cost, they decided not to Oprah anymore. So the, one of the recommendations of the committee is to formalize our process and we will now start to see more of these charges being made transparent to the Requestors because there is, you know, there is a cost to this ask. So if you, if you cannot be judicious in asking more specific things or trying other channels before you use Oprah, we would have to then pass the buck back to you when it crosses the threshold. The policy committee will sit down to determine what that's, you know, acceptable threshold. And a lot of districts do that. I did my research, talked to a lot of other board members in other districts, and this was mentioned that, you know, all districts pass the cost back to Requestors when it goes above a certain threshold. So we will have to do that because we cannot afford to continue paying that much money for Oprahs. This is money taken away from our students. This is money taken away from our programs. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have any questions? Seeing none, we'll move on to the next section. It's public forum. Anyone would like to speak? You have four minutes. Speak only on the agenda this evening. I don't know if they put a pad and pen up there. I requested that if it went past four minutes and you still wanted your question answered, to write your name and phone number and a question. If there's no paper, we'll try to get paper up there and we'll try to get back to you as soon as possible with the answer to your question. So is there anyone else, anyone that would like to go up, get up and speak? Yes, please.
Chrissy Scurby, Monroe Township. That was a lot with the committee meeting, so I'll try to get through everything now. One thing, Ms. Bor, that I'd just like to comment on what you just said about the Open Public Meetings Act. That is a way for residents and really anybody to request information not readily available to them. So I would not like to see the district make it harder to get information. It already is hard and I think that's why a lot of people did use Oprah. Perhaps now that Mrs. Zeez is on the board, you'll see a reduction in the cost because I don't think she'll have to Oprah round the clock like she's been doing for the last four years. So hopefully the attorney's fees go down for that. I also wanted to address the use of policy or use of the facilities. And I'd like to get Ms. Allen's opinion on that. When I was on the Board of Education, the board asked the administration, tasked the administration with coming up with ways to drive more revenue into the district. One of the initiatives was through advertising, one was through our use of facilities. Dr. Chanley and the administration did a extensive research into other districts and saw that we were charging significantly lower than districts like East Brunswick. I know Ms. Allen's office was instrumental in putting together figures, working with facilities, and we revamped the fee schedule. Our fees are in line with other districts right now and I know there are districts that bring in significant revenues from outside groups. Ms. Ratner brought something up during the committee meeting. She was on her computer and she asked a question about the number of events that were on there. And it sparked me to go on to the community use calendar and take a look at it. And I did. And I did email the board and the administration. I had some questions I haven't gotten answered. I had some questions I haven't gotten answered. But what I saw right now currently in there of outside groups were a few events that are being held by outside groups that are actually paying. There were five Garba events. There was one group that is using the buildings on Sundays, Oak Tree School. That's been going on for multiple years. Those were two of the outside groups, as well as a CJ MEA music group that uses the building too. Other than that, the only thing I saw in there were all use of the buildings by groups that are not currently paying. So, that's something that you need to look at. We don't have a large use of our facilities by outside groups, and this was, we did increase the cost. And if you look on there, outside groups are paying $400 an hour. They're paying security, they're paying custodians, they're paying an application fee. If they want to come and see the building prior to renting it, they have to pay a touring fee, they have to provide their own insurance. So, this notion that outside groups are costing us money, that's not true. We revamped that a couple of years ago to make it revenue, to bring in revenue. And to sit here and try to say we should change that and not allow outside groups would be decreasing our revenue. And I got my tax bill. It's the highest school tax that I've ever seen in Monroe. We didn't lower taxes. To say now that you want to stop bringing in the revenue that we're bringing in is outrageous. I don't think that's something that you should be looking to do. As far as Apple Garth, one question I do have. How much of the $5 million that the town was giving for that project has been paid to the district yet? That's one of the questions that I have. Because they didn't give us the $5 million upfront?
No. What happens is, once we pay the vendor, the contractor, we submit the bill to the township, and they reimburse us. But it's not only the township that reimburses us. We are getting money from the state as well under the rod grant, and we had our own share that we have to kick in as well. So, whatever we have submitted to the township for reimbursement, they have paid us.
Do you know approximately how much that is?
I can look that up. Yep.
And I only ask that because the township gave us the $5 million for use of the buildings. So, that's something to also understand, that that is tied together, the money that we've gotten from the township. And if you look at that, when we were negotiating that shared services agreement with Dr. Chanley and the mayor, Ms. Allen's office prepared a document that showed that the township was getting $14 million worth of use of the building had they been paying that to give us the $5 million upfront. So, yeah, we do lose money on that, if you want to call it losing money, but we needed that $5 million from the township now to fix the building, and that was the agreement that the district made, was to give them the free use. And yeah, there is a cost to that, but we can't go back on that, and we shouldn't be going and saying that people that are paying shouldn't use our buildings. That's revenue into the district.
Okay. Okay. I believe it's about almost 1.9 million so far that we have asked for reimbursement on, and that's what they've paid us.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Anyone else would like to speak during this portion of the meeting? Seeing none, I'd like Mr. Weiss to make a statement, please.
Yes, I'm going to read a resolution with regard to the doctrine of necessity. Whereas Dr. Shari Chanley serves in the capacity of superintendent for the 2425 school year, and whereas the board must consider personnel matters related to Dr. Chanley's employment, and whereas upon review of the various conflicts of interest of the current board members, it has been determined that six of the members have conflicts of interest pursuant to the School Ethics Act, whereas pursuant to Policy 0163, when a quorum of the board has conflicted interests, the doctrine of necessity may be invoked in order to allow conflicted board members to participate and vote only when the Board of Education has fewer non-conflicted board members than are required pursuant to statute to take action. And whereas when invoking the doctrine of necessity, the board shall state publicly that it is invoking the doctrine of necessity with the reasons for doing so and the specific nature of the conflicts of interest. And whereas the board policy further provides that it shall read the resolution invoking the doctrine of necessity at a regularly scheduled public meeting such as this one, post the notice of the resolution for 30 days, and provide the School Ethics Commission with a copy of the resolution. And whereas the School Ethics Act NJSA 18A:12-21@SEC was enacted by the New Jersey State Legislature to ensure and preserve public confidence in school board members and school administrators and to provide specific ethical standards to guide their conduct. And whereas the School Ethics Commission has provided guidance regarding the invocation of the doctrine of necessity when a quorum of the Board of Education is not available because members of the Board of Education have conflicts of interest on a matter required to be discussed and voted upon. And whereas the board intends to have discussions concerning Dr. Chanley this evening in closed session, whereas the members of the board have conflicts of interest that would prevent their participation and vote on the matters related to Dr. Chanley are as follows. Carmen Alvarez, Gail DePain, Peter Piro, Usha Sharma, and Charles Zeichner are involved in litigation with Dr. Chanley. Number two, Kate Ratner's husband, David, is a teacher employed by the board. Whereas as a result of the foregoing, the board does not have a quorum to vote on matters related to the superintendent's employment, and the board's counsel and the board have determined that it is necessary to invoke the doctrine of necessity. Now therefore be it resolved that the above paragraphs are hereby incorporated by reference, and be it further resolved that the doctrine of necessity is hereby invoked with respect to the board's deliberation of and the public vote related to Dr. Chanley, and be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution, having been read at a public meeting of the Board of Education on September 17, 2025, be posted in accordance with the board's standard procedures for not less than 30 days, and that the board secretary reflect the same in the minutes of the meeting, and be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be provided to the School Ethics Commission. Is there a motion and a second?
Motion.
Second?
Questions, discussion?
Questions or discussion?
Just a point of clarification. If we are this week, still vote yes or no, right? There's no conflict on the doctrine of necessity itself.
Correct.
Okay.
You can vote.
Ms. Allen, could you take the vote, please?
Yes. Ms. Alvarez?
Yes.
Ms. Aziz?
Yes.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Mr. Piro?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
Yes.
Ms. Sharma?
Yes.
Mr. Tufano?
No.
Mr. Zeichner?
Yes.
Ms. DePain?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Ms. Allen.
You're welcome.
Assistant Superintendent's report?
Sure. So, if we could put up the strategic plan PowerPoint. So, the bulk of my report tonight will be sharing an update on our strategic plan, and embedded in that is an update on our full-day K project that we're working on. So, next slide. Just as a refresher, when we developed the strategic plan, we referenced it as our North Star. It's something that will drive the district in terms of its goals and its direction for the next several years. We had several goal areas under facilities and operations, leveraging technology, and students excelling. And this comes directly from our strategic plan. Again, this is a snapshot of what we developed last year in terms of action initiatives and what our initial projections were in terms of projects we would tackle over the next series of years. You can see at the bottom, that's the timeline. Again, this is a snapshot from the current plan, so I'm not going to get into details, but you know, some of the highlights. We have the ESIP project, we have our LFP, our Long Range Facilities Plan, a demographic study. On the transportation side, we were going to, over the next couple of years, take a snapshot and a look at the electric vehicle piece. Next slide. Under leveraging technology, these are some more of our initial thoughts and projections. We were going to update our district technology plan, look at our tech refresh at the high school, take a snapshot and a look at the middle and the elementary school. Again, these are not one-year projects, these are multi-year projects in many cases. We are doing a website refresh, we're updating our communications and notification system. Next slide. Again, that's directly from our current strategic action plan. Students excelling. We have several projects that are, again, multi-year projects here. Portrait of a Graduate is one that we will be, definitely a long-lasting project for us, multi-year project. We will continue to look at expanding programs, everything from the arts to the computer science realm. We're looking at expansion of partnerships, and I'll highlight what we're looking at with a specific lens in a minute regarding our post-secondary partnerships. Our MTSS program has been a few-year project along the way, and it will continue to evolve. We are seeing fruits of the labors throughout the K-12 realm in terms of interventions that we've provided with students and different paths that those students have taken if they haven't had those interventions. So, that's been one of the most successful pieces of our educational reform in the past couple of years. Full-day K is a large chunk of what this update will be about. We did update our Genesis Human Resources Module, and that's something I'll also highlight as well. So, here are some of the projects that we completed over the past year. So, and an update of where we are. So, ESIP, that is a multi-year project, that's our Energy Savings Improvement Plan. We give monthly updates at our facilities meeting. What we've done in the past year in terms of completion is the building envelope, that's the outside building, doorstops, door sweeps, windows, seals, that part of the project is complete. Another part of the project that is well underway and is proceeding as expected is the lighting upgrades. So, we are, you know, deep in that. We have several schools that are almost completed, and the teams that are working on installing lights and lighting fixtures and efficiencies in those areas will bounce and move to other schools as we proceed there. Some other things we've done is, like I said, we've updated the Genesis Human Resources Module. We completed that upgrade for the end of the last school year. We rolled out our contracts at the end of the school year to our staff through that module, and beginning this year, everybody is engaging on name changes, health benefits, tweaking W-9 adjustments and things. We're starting to see that come through digitally. What we are working on, and we have started, we had our initial setup meeting, and we are sharing our information systems with Genesis right now, is on the payroll module. We approved that at the last board meeting, and we've had, like I said, we've had our setup meeting. We look to be doing dual, we call it sister payrolls. So, we're using our current payroll system with a simultaneous payroll through Genesis starting in October, which is a Herculean effort of getting those dual payrolls going. And the reason we do that is to ensure that both systems are generating the same information, there are no errors, because we look to transition to the Genesis payroll piece for the January 1 pay period, and that's when we would start using that. Another piece related to the payroll is, we historically have exchanged paper documents that have signatures and log hours for additional work for various groups in our staff. This would digitize that piece, that digital, we call them digital timesheets, that will be an ongoing project through the fall and into the spring. So, the priority right now is to get the mirroring, the payroll piece, because that has a firm start of January 1. That digital payroll or digital timesheet piece will roll itself out over the next few months and into the spring. The budgeting and purchasing piece, that will be a future project. We're going to take a look at that down the road, and that would be a behind-the-scenes piece for us in the business office and our planning purposes in terms of budgeting. That would be the final step in syncing everything up in terms of efficiencies in the Genesis Module. Demographic study is something we commissioned last fall. It was completed early winter, and we have it posted in the district website, along with historical demographic studies as well. In terms of the district advocacy, and you'll see that threaded through the next few slides, we continue to advocate in various ways to receive extra funding to support, whether it's the full-day K initiative, which we were very thankful to receive, the additional state aid, it was capital-specific, and we will be allocating that towards anything full-day K-related within the capital umbrella. And then, we also completed our Long Range Facilities Plan. That was something that was completed in the spring. The next slide is leveraging technology. So, we completed and updated and shared our district technology plan last winter. That is something, again, it's posted on the website. We went through it extensively with the Director of Technology. We actually, when we did some of the repairs to the high school generator, some of the elements within the district technology plan in terms of emergency preparedness, we were able to implement and/or tweak and adjust in terms of protocols, because when we powered down the high school, the high school is the hub, it's the nerve center for the entire district in terms of internet. So, we have a generator, it will always keep that room running, but when you have to fix the generator, we had to have a Plan B to keep that up and running for ourselves. So, we did that, and we powered the essential equipment with a gas generator, so backup generator for our backup generator, and we're happy to announce that that is up and running. There are some future repairs that will need to be done, but it was a very good opportunity for us to put something into action that we had been planning for. And we began to have discussions about what does technology look like at the elementary level and the middle school level in terms of an expanded technology initiative. I don't want to say one-to-one, but that is generally where the discussion will go. You know, is it one-to-one bringing home? Is it one-to-one in school in terms of accessibility? How close are we? And that syncs very closely with our tech plan. We've done a lot of work with AI. We've had trainings throughout the school year. We have implemented a policy last year related to AI, and we're going to establish clear expectations and foundations since the beginning of the school year for staff and students. And AI is going to be an evolving, dynamic kind of situation that we will manage and/or explore as we navigate the next, I guess, foreseeable future, not even the next few years. In terms of tech refresh, we updated the high school iPads. That was something that was done over the summer. We've actually sold the old iPads, and we received more money than we expected. The tech staff did an amazing job. You've heard us report this. They were available, set up, and available for students to pick up before the school year started. That has not always been the case in terms of our availability and the technology's availability to be on-site. So, we were just very excited to have no worries about whether they were going to get here and what the first few days of school were going to look like. Again, here's our district advocacy piece that we continue to look at. We have programs in the high school that we regularly engage our community, and that's something that we will continue to do, whether it's through capstone projects, whether it's through, I guess, working with and leveraging our professionals. We do presentations, we do one of the classes. It almost does like a pitch in terms of, you know, identifying a problem, creating a solution, and then having engineers essentially provide feedback on the student solutions, and then they come back and they actually design and build their projects. So, we do a nice job in terms of leveraging professionals in the township directly in the classroom, and we want to continue to do that and expand those opportunities. Students excelling, expanding the continuum of programming. So, just highlighting a few things, our computer science and STEM classes are continuing to grow. We expand them not only just to meet student interest, but we are also expanding them based on the evolving landscape of that field. One of the things that we have seen evolving is, there's a cybersecurity piece that we're starting to, we have a course now, but we're also starting to see an increase in more specific, not just broad computer science piece, but more specific field-related outcomes. We have our eye on an AP, Advanced Placement Cybersecurity Course that's coming up. So, we anticipate seeing information on that through this school year. If it comes out, we will prepare something and most likely write an AP cybersecurity course next summer for implementation the following year. But one thing I wanted to highlight is, as we look at college partnerships and post-secondary partnerships, we are expanding and continue to look not just at dual enrollment courses, and we will always and continue to work on that. We have found ourselves often limited by the threshold in which the colleges hold the potential instructors of our staff too in terms of credentials and qualifications, and that's something that is a challenge we continue to navigate. But what we are exploring and what we are looking to do is increase the certificate opportunities, and whether it's And whether it's a cybersecurity certificate that we can collaborate with a post-secondary college with, whether it's a health food services certificate, professional certificate, that our students could leave with and go and step into a kitchen, a professional kitchen, right out of high school and have the credentials that they would normally have to seek on their own to do. So we are looking not just for a college course dual enrollment piece, but we're looking to expand in other areas and other opportunities to provide our students, you know, a head start in the workforce when they step out of the high school. So that's where I see a lot of the evolution in terms of our partnerships. Because there are opportunities in that realm. And we are continuing to seek those dual enrollment courses as well. I'm going to skip Full Day K because I have separate update on that. And then the Portrait of a Graduate. So through our investigation, we had four or five vendors that we vetted. We've narrowed it down to one in terms of a potential for if we want to leverage something outside of our organization. As we explored as well, we went through a school certification process many, many, many years ago. And through that process, the part of the process was identifying a portrait of a graduate. Now, we went through, we have the kind of guide in the playbook to do that. We actually have an administrator that was a field staff member that would go to other schools that were going through the same process we were doing to meet with their staff and evaluate their applications for certifications. So what we will do now is we will find some sort of balance between, you know, who and what do we need to potentially explore that's outside the district? And what can we do inside the district as we take steps forwards in our Portrait of a Graduate? So we do have a playbook related to that. But we need to see, is there something we need to do if we want to reach out to the community with a survey? Are there surveys related to Portrait of a Graduate that we can engage in to collect the data instead of starting scratch and creating our own?
Questions based on this part before you go into the other components? Or if you want us to wait till the very end?
What do we do right at the end? And I can kind of loop things in because you might get things answered as we kind of go along.
All right, sounds good. Thank you.
Yeah, so that's kind of where we're at with Portrait of a Graduate. What are we looking at moving ahead? What is the balance between, you know, using someone outside of our domain versus leveraging it all internally? And then the next slide is a graphical representation of what we've done, what we've done and what still has elements that are in the works. And then what are some things that are still in the works? So this is like a summary of what we did in '24, '25. And then our next slide is what we potentially see as things that we're moving forward with this year. So the no-brainer piece in terms of facilities and operations is ESIP continues. What we would see is a completion of the lighting aspect of ESIP. And what we will be continually updated on, and this will be happening in different stages, is the mechanical piece. So there are mechanical projects that are in design. There are mechanical projects that are designed and they're seeking equipment. And we know the lead time on equipment could be 18 months. It could be six months. It could be a month. So these projects will come together based on the length of time the design occurs, when the design's completed and the materials are begun to be assembled and turned onsite. There are some, some of these mechanical projects we have in process. Some will, even if we get the parts in time, we need to do summer installations. So they may be delayed till either next summer or the summer after. But the ESIP piece is something we will be continuing to talk to and getting updates in BGNT. Like I mentioned earlier, we're going to continue to roll out Genesis Payroll. I'm excited to report in the future about our parallel payrolls and the success of that. But most excited, and I think the staff and throughout the district is most excited, is the digitalization of our timesheets. They're literally hand-signed, date stamped by hand, driven from building to building for signatures, hand-delivered down into payroll and manually input. So this is a long overdue and much appreciated process that has a level of accountability as well. Every time somebody logs in and reviews and then digitally moves this through the sequence of approvals, there'll be a timestamp. So the initial requester will be able to see where things are and where they get stuck. In terms of leveraging technology, I mentioned earlier, this year we're going to take a deep dive into the middle school, but also the K-5 technology vision in terms of what is a one-to-one? What does an expansion look like? And part of that we'll have to look at budgetary timing and resource acquisition. We have highlighted this a little bit in our curriculum committee meetings. We're diving into esports. What does that look like? Currently, right now, it's going to go through our enrichment model. But what is the long-term vision? What is the long-term look for that as it moves into the middle school and the high school? Clubs versus teams and funding and things. AI, like I said, is going to be an ongoing initiative. Something we're also excited about is an expansion of live broadcasting. We're really going to take a good look at expanding our sports live broadcasting piece. Some other things, the EV, electric vehicle piece, that is something that in collaboration with Taking a Look at the Bus App, one of the other projects we will begin to look at is electric vehicles, electric busing. We will read the landscape of availability. We'll read the landscape of funding and grants and things like that. But that's something that we were going to keep an eye on and monitor. One of the things we even talked about was, you know, buses are one thing, but maybe there's, you know, one of our maintenance vehicles or one of the other vehicles we maintain. Will be another realistic look for a potential dabbling in the electric vehicles. One thing we did in terms of communications is we did do the website overhaul. That was done last year. And starting this school year, we've been utilizing Messaging XR. That is our new, replaced Blackboard Connect. So we are kind of in the foundational use of it. Expect improved look of our communication as we continue to explore and expand. One of the issues we've had historically is everything we send is a very plain text-looking email and you have to open up attachments and/or hit links to find things. And we have the ability to embed things into emails and communications now. So keep an eye on that as we move forward and we expand our use of Messaging XR. That really came online though, literally a day or two before school started. So the priority was to get clean, clear messages out. And now we'll get fancy and glitzy with what they look like. The transportation tracking, again, it's something we have mentioned in BGNT. And I highlighted a little bit before, but, you know, we're going to look at expanding our arts programming, whether it's through the orchestra, digital music, audio engineering. That's something that's facilities-related, staffing-related and budgeting-related. So, you know, the goal with that would be to take a look at and make a plan for, this is what we expect it to cost. This is what we would need staffing-wise. And when we look at a strings program, it physically takes up a tremendous amount of space. The instruments themselves are significantly more voluminous than a traditional flute, clarinet, even a trumpet or trombone. So when we talk about facilities, we have a space piece that we significantly need to consider when we look at, you know, six or eight large cellos and things. So as much as we say space is an issue, that becomes a significant issue when you're talking about a six-foot-tall, four-foot-wide instrument and you've got six of them, right? So we will be exploring that, further exploring that. That's been on the tip of our radar. You know, we really wanted to dive into that. But, you know, we will put a plan in place and have things squared away for what that may look like so we can pull the trigger when we're ready to do that. And the next slide is really what you can expect to see later in the future where we, just like the previous two slides ago, we'll throw our check marks on there as we complete things. We'll keep this little swirl there as it's an ongoing project. And now this is what everybody's been waiting for, our Full Day K update. So what do we do for the '24, '25 school year and what are we doing this year? So starting in the fall, we commissioned the demographic study. That was the foundation for affirming what we had seen in enrollment numbers and projections. We had seen a stabilization of enrollment throughout the district, but it was really realizing, starting at our elementary schools. And it has worked its way through the elementary schools and it's in the middle school right now. We're about a year away from it starting to funnel into the high school. The demographic study was completed in the winter of 2025. This past spring, we were able to have meetings with the principals, the vice principals, supervisors, the teachers, the kindergarten teachers and the staff that interacts with our kindergarten students. Because one of the other questions on the table was what could it look like? Right now, our schools are sister schools with pre-K through three or two, depending on the school, all the way up to the end of the high school. Is there consideration for a early childhood learning center, ECLC? And that is a model in many districts. So the question needed to be asked and we needed to potentially explore that if that was something that was overwhelmingly supported or that was the preferred way. And unanimously, unanimously, not one opinion, you know, to the other side. It was kindergarten belongs in the schools in which they, the students live at. The students are with their siblings and they can progress through and be a part of the culture that they'll be a part of, whether it's K-2 or pre-K-2 or pre-K-3. So those conversations were important because depending on which path you go, we could be looking at different projects, right? And looking at different structures and setups of buildings. So knowing that that is the preferred way and certainly is the preferred way on my end, you know, we proceeded with a path that would keep kindergarten in their home schools. So that was, that was the foundation, along with the demographic study, of let's move forward. Other topics that were talked about was, you know, what do you need as a kindergarten teacher moving forward? And it was a good conversation. You know, we need some time to take a look at what we have. And how do we expand, you know, a 40-minute period into maybe a 60-minute period? How do we dig into science, which we don't typically have a ton of time to get into? So we had really powerful and meaningful conversations. Coming out of that meeting, we leveraged our staff development team to embed Full Day K-related topics and a professional learning community in our professional development plan for this school year. So all of our kindergarten teachers are enrolled in staff development related to Full Day K. And this is all done with, whether we do it for next year or whether we do it for two years down the road, we're going to start now, right? If we don't do it next year, we do it two years down the road, they can continue on what they're working on now and keep digging and digging and digging it for another year. That's totally fine. So it was a, something we put in place because we do our professional development, planning and enrollment before the school year's over. So we have everybody, starting this year, and our first staff development day is coming up, they will be engaging in various activities, planning, diving into the resources, starting this school year. This summer, we had our summer administrative workshop. And I was able to meet with the primary principals, assistant principals. And what we did is we began to simulate what it would look like if we implemented it now. Because we wanted to look at, are there enough rooms with bathrooms? Is the space acceptable? What does it look like? You know, what would the potential configuration of your building look like? So we got them started on that and I cycled back to them towards the end of the summer because that was one of the projects they engaged in over the summer. And we were able to determine that we can have, we do have the space and we could move forward if we needed to for this coming school year. We began to prepare for tonight's update. What did that look like? We looked at two different pathways. We call it Pathway 2026, Pathway 2027. So if we can get it done for the fall of next year or if we can get it done for two years down the road. And then regardless of the pathway, when we looked at the buildings, and we've talked about this for many, many years, there are still things that are going to need to be done to the buildings to get them back into their standard operating setups. And I'll give you an example. So at Oak Tree, we have a classroom constructed in the media center. We have a classroom constructed at the back of the stage. We have classes that are taking place at the back of the stage. Those are things that impact the operations of the full total use of the media center, the full total use of the stage area at Oak Tree. And I'm just using that as an example. So regardless of the path we take, we still have some things to do to make room, to put everything back to where they need to be. In many cases, there are class, first, second or third grade classes that are in art rooms or in music rooms. And that's happening today. That is happening today. We want to restore them, you know, the buildings back to where they are. We can move forward and then have a project, move forward with Full Day K and have a project to set things back. We don't need to do that project in order to do Full Day K. That's kind of, that's what we've come up with in terms of the potential options. We could wait and do the project and do it all at once. But that is a multi-year delay in terms of the planning of that project, the financing of that project, the construction of the project, with the whole variable of would that project even pass a referendum? So Pathway A and Pathway B get us there without the referendum in our current spaces. So what are we going to continue doing? We're going to continue working with an architect and I actually have a meeting tomorrow. He, Architect of Record is onsite for many of the ESIP projects. He's going to stop by and we're going to have a conversation and I'm going to show him where we kind of stand. And he's familiar with our buildings. Many of the buildings have projects that have already been designed. So he would be able to see what we're looking at, take a look at what's already designed and then also apply whatever regulations need to be on there. If we, we need more small group instruction rooms based on the ratio of classrooms we have, then he'd be able to identify, if we're going to add two classrooms here, we need two more small group instruction rooms. So we're going to meet with him. And what he would do is he would put together a proposal for a design study. So that would be the next step. The meeting tomorrow doesn't cost us anything, but it would be a design study for these additional projects. Again, unrelated to Pathway 2026 and Pathway 2027. We will go through the budgeting process this fall as if Full Day K would be happening in fall of 2026. Because what would prevent us from rolling that out is not being able to pay for it embedded in our budget. If we can't, and you'll see this in one of the pathways, if we can't get through it, right? We're looking at whether it's healthcare costs or, you know, significant reductions in state aid or whatever variables that are significant, we would potentially look at putting this on as an additional proposal question because that's another pathway we could do this, right? Doesn't mean we have to go down this road. But we could put it as additional proposal question during the next November election. Again, the election wouldn't cost us like we would be running our own election. That's why I would recommend or I would suggest the November piece. If it went on for a question there, the costs of it, which we, again, we would have all the costs associated with it as we go through the budgeting process. And we have a fairly good, we have a very good idea of what the cost is right now. But we will refine it through the budgeting process, especially on the staffing side. We would be prepared for that November piece. And we would spend the springtime this year getting ready for the additional proposal next November. It would be voted on and then we could implement it for the following, 2027. So if you go to the next slide, you'll see Pathway 2026, Pathway 2027, an additional project referendum. I wanted to note down at the bottom on the right for the additional project, it is in the summer/fall '27 time slot, but it doesn't necessarily have that as a fixed date. What we would talk about there is we would talk about the kindergarten-related projects. But then we could take a look at, is there an HVAC unit that ESIP was unable to cover? Should we include that as a potential addition to this project? We could take a look at some other district-related projects. Again, that would be something that would restore the buildings back to art rooms being art rooms, classrooms out of media centers. It would take us back to the standard operating expectations for our buildings. The timeline on the left is something similar to what I reviewed. So that's Pathway 2026. So we're looking at budget development this fall. That's really going to be the linchpin in the key piece here. As we go through the budgeting process, we'll integrate curricular materials. I can tell you that right now we have about 70% of our first, we're using first-grade enrollment numbers for our projections for Full Day K. 70% of our kindergartners are onsite relative to the first-grade numbers. So we would have about 30% of new students coming to visit us for Full Day K. What does that translate in terms of expenses? It means we have 70% of the curricular materials we need. It means we have 70% of the curricular materials we need, so the 70% of the books, 70% of the pens, pencils that we would need. So we would need to budget for approximately 30% more. We would include, and that in terms of the scale of expenses is very manageable inside a budget. The most expensive part of curriculum materials are actually teacher materials. So we would have to allocate, depending on how many new sections we had, we would have to allocate new teacher setups. Then additional expenses that we are considering is, with the implementation of full-day K, we would be no longer running our ECE. So we have, last year, we transferred $190,000 from ECE to our general fund. So we would, through the budgeting process, account for that $190,000 differential. And again, this is why we are cautiously optimistic that it potentially could happen in 2026, but we need to go through the budgeting process to identify whether it's going to be a reality. In terms of staffing, where we stand today, we are about six or seven, in the need of about six or seven teachers. But that was with the staffing analysis of the K3 buildings. We go through the budgeting process, and we look at staffing across the district. So that number could reduce based on how things play out and sort out in the, in the budgeting process as enrollment changes, as enrollment moves its way through the district. In terms of what's after that, we will make a call, we will make the decision early winter, because we need to give ourselves, if we're going to go through with this, we need to give ourselves time to recruit and advertise for full-day K. We want to make sure we can capture that other 30% and know that they can come, and we would be rolling out this program. We would then register students in the spring and the summer. And one thing what we would do is, obviously, we'd manage and monitor enrollment, and if our projection to hit the first-grade number, if we come in under that projection, we would certainly not hire the staff and be, you know, one teacher above what we expected. So we would hire based on what our numbers in terms of enrollment are. And then the goal with that Pathway 2026 would be open full-day K in the fall of '26. So 2027, Pathway 2027, the way that looks is, when we make the decision this winter, whether we can absorb the cost of full-day K within the operating budget. If we can't, we would then begin to prepare for an additional proposal question in November. And we would have clear numbers in terms of cost. That's what was required as we went through that last additional proposal question. You have to have specific identifiable staff with, with staff assignments, you need exact costs. So we would have that prepared, because we just went through that with the budgeting process. We would follow the timelines in the spring and the summer for submittals, for a question. It would go up to vote in November. We would hopefully pass it at that point, potentially. And then we would begin to advertise and recruit for students, and then open full-day K. Again, that's not the preferred path, but if we're looking for options, right, options to implement full-day K, this is an option to do that. Another thing we could do is not, choose not to go for a additional proposal question. We could choose to integrate it in the budget again for the 2027 school year. We could go through what we went, we were going to go through this year, and try and embed it in the budget for the 2027 school year to implement in 20, in the fall of 2027. So this doesn't have to be the second step. We could, again, try and fit it in the budget, but this is a pathway if we, if we don't integrate it in this year's budget for next year. And then again, on the right-hand side, it's just some timelines about what we would do in terms of identifying and planning for an additional referendum project. The real tight timeline related to that is going to depend on the project, how much design has to go into a project. Before you do a referendum, they also take that initial design, they fully expand it and get everything priced out for bids, and that takes many, many, many months. So the reason I have kind of a disclaimer about future referendum, it's not necessarily summer/fall '27, it could be sooner. If all these projects that are identified are already planned and designed, and we just need to go out and have them estimated essentially, that's much quicker than starting from scratch with a plan, going through the planning process, then going through the estimation process, and then putting together a referendum. So, and again, this is additional projects to restore the building. When we get enrollment, and we get this up and running, we could always tweak and adjust what this project looks like as well. So I just wanted to give you a total snapshot of realistic pathways to get to where we ultimately have to be by 2028, 2029, but this get, these are just realistic pathways to get us there. But the most important piece is, for this year, for right now, we're going to go through the budgeting process as if full-day K would be implemented, and we will see ultimately what the cost would be in terms of updated curriculum materials, updated costs for staffing. We'll layer in our health benefits information, all those variables, and we will make a decision whether we can pull this off or not. Now, one other kind of caveat here is, when we look at projects for that additional referendum, we will have building-specific pieces, but we will also be doing things with the capital money we receive that needs to be expended this year as additional state aid. So that capital umbrella that we'll look at this year, that would pay for the design study, if we were to go through with a referendum design study, that will pay for it this year. So we can use that money that we receive as additional state aid. We can use that towards desks and chairs, if we need, if we need something like that, as we outfit a room for, for full-day K. We would also identify, is there a part of the building where the kindergarten programs are going to exist, and do they need a new rooftop ventilator unit for HVAC? And we could allocate the money we have now to do those projects, because they would be impacted and related to our full-day K initiative. Additionally, we could do a control system that controls part of a building, which includes part of a wing that would have kindergarten. So we have money to spend on this project this year that is state aid, that actually needs to be expended. So we will, regardless, be expending it minimally on capital projects, but we would, if, if we are in a realistic situation to get this done for the fall 2026, I would anticipate if we need desks and chairs, we're using that money to get desks and chairs. If we need, you know, anything capital related to those rooms, that's what we're spending the money on now. So, and that concludes my strategic plan update with a focus on full-day K.
I just want to, yeah. I just want to thank Dr. Lehman for the quality, quantity of the information that he gave us tonight. I know he's been giving us at different committee meetings, bits and pieces about the full-day kindergarten. It's like he wants to come, he wanted to come to this meeting tonight and surprise everybody with his results, but it looks promising. He, as you can tell, he, and I know Mr. Morale, they've done a lot of work on the strategic planning and reporting, and they reported to the CAC the other night. So I want to thank you, Dr. Lehman. I don't know if you took a breath in between that. Now that you're done, please do, and thank you for all your time. And I know Ms. Allen, he keeps reporting to you for budget, going like, and then our budget, so. I know she's taking notes on what budgetary issues we're going to come across in order to fulfill the, I guess, 2026 kindergarten. We'd like to aim for that one.
Pathway A.
Yes. Pathway A. Right? We're all in agreement.
We call it Pathway 2026.
Pathway 26, Pathway A, whatever, we like that pathway.
Option one.
No, don't make it more difficult. Option one. Ms. Ratner, you had a question?
I do. So I fully agree with what Ms. DePaine said. This was, you know, I really appreciate the update on all of the aspects of the strategic plan. I had a couple of questions about full-day kindergarten, and then I also just had one about stuff that was earlier, so I'll, I'll do that one first. Just the dual enrollment, when you mentioned about possible also certificates. One of the things that I know has been brought up by, you know, other parents, or I think it was possibly brought up at curriculum meetings, was the ability in other districts that they are able to graduate with an associate's degree. And I know you had mentioned like specific courses, that there's, you know, certain thresholds that our teachers have to meet. Is there any way of, I guess, providing that type of a program, whether it's bringing the college teachers in, or I guess providing, instead of AP training, additional training for our own teachers, to get to something like that?
Yeah, so we actually have some model course sequences from a few other districts, and the, so it's very similar to some of our tracks. You know, it would be a commitment from a freshman year, and many students would do that, and some of the schools have like a nursing track, or a science track, or, you know, a STEM track. Again, it comes down to, those districts have had staff that are grandfathered into their current certificated programs, that their dual enrollment pieces. We don't have the staff that would support the, the amount of course requirements on the collegiate end to award the associate's degree. And I'm looking at the course sequence of one of the samples, that's why I'm kind of hesitating, because I'm looking down. And part of the kind of path and commitment they make is they're also taking college courses in the summer through, and I'm looking, most of these are with middlesex, with middlesex. That will be something that we will continue, because that is something we want to do. When we have a pathway that we can have the staff with the proper credentials and the dual enrollment all synced together, and this isn't a fault of anyone, this is just the, the reality of many of those dual enrollment courses have a threshold of which it's extremely difficult for a public school teacher to have that, to meet that, you know, whether it's a, you know, a specific high-level chemistry degree, most of those staff members are working in the private fields, right? They're, they're not in our schools. So we were able to expand in the science realm this year to offer chemistry as a dual enrollment course, one thing we haven't had in the past. And that's directly related to one of our staff members and their work at one of the colleges that we have the dual enrollment piece. Because there is a lab requirement that also comes to a lab science, and they're able to fulfill that lab requirement because of that staff member's credentials and, you know, their employment with us. So we're adding things every year. When we get to the point where we can weave a full associate's program in there, we would 100% jump on it in a heartbeat. But again, it's a, it's a significant course sequence, and it really comes down to our ability to get staff in the right slots in order to fulfill that. So we, we have, we have some model and samples, but I'm confident that when staff start to retire in some of the areas, my guess is many of those programs will fall away.
Okay.
And we'll, we'll see, you know, the, kind of what we have, a smattering of dual enrollment, but the real focus, a strong focus now is that certificate piece. Because that is something that is tangible, our students can walk out with something that they can use in the workforce tomorrow.
All right. Thanks. And then I have two questions regarding full-day kindergarten, and I, I think, I'm not going to speak for everyone on the board, but I think we would all love to see that Pathway 2026. I've been, you know, I have a first and a third grader, so I've been hearing this a lot, and, you know, I think it would be fantastic if we can get this, obviously, there's certain restrictions. But my, my first question for, if, the potential if we needed to go out for an additional proposal question, and I'm going to try to put this accurately, Mr. Weiss, if I'm wrong on any of this part of the law, let me know. Because when we were looking at this last year, when we had our legislators here, I know we had been advocating for them to pass one of their proposed bills, which was to allow for an additional spending proposal, where it can then be used in the following year in November. Because right now, you can only use it for programs that you currently provided. And now, they had passed the law that allows it for the special elections, and I remember this was a conversation, I think Ms. DePaine and Ms. Sharma, you were there with the legislators, where it's allowed for the following year for those special elections, right? So it's like, I actually just wrote it, so like the fourth Tuesday in January, second Tuesday in March, those can still, can now be done for the following year? From my knowledge, they have not passed that part for November where we could do it for the following year. So I agree, it's obviously better to save money and do it all in November, but would it be that we, I'm assuming by doing that, the suggestion was then that we wouldn't offer until it was, you know, approved by the voters? I guess I'm sort of just not totally understanding if we have to have it approved first, and then we have to wait if it's in November. As of right now, I wasn't sure about that part of it.
Yep, yep. So what I would do is, we had a meeting with our legislators, and they said they would work with us and be creative and support us in rolling this out. One of the things I would do is advocate for this potential opportunity. One of the things they threw out is that they could tweak the legislation and the, the parameters around some of the pre-K specific funding, and we could leverage that for a private partnership with kindergarten, and they were willing to work with us on that. We certainly have a pathway, and if we can go to the legislation, legislators and say, this is our pathway, this is the most fiscally responsible way to do it, instead of us paying $100,000 to $150,000 to run a, run our own private election, we can get this done here, maybe we can leverage, leverage that as a pathway to get that done. Yep.
Can I ask a follow-up to that? So what, what I'm understanding is, what Ms. Ratner says, that there is no legal possibility to do that, and what you're saying is that it would come through conversations with legislatures. So we don't know if, if Pathway 2027 is the way to go, then we don't know that November 26 is a set in stone for a proposal?
If we could get it done for then, we would certainly try and get it done for then. Yep.
Like we would get, have the legal capability to put out a question in November 2026? Like today, we don't. Is that right? Am I understanding it right? Today, we don't have.
From what I've understood, we can put it out November 2026, but it would only be for programs that are there. So we can certainly, you know, and I, obviously, we can put this as a focus for least advocates.
In essence, we could do what we did last time in the spring for the following school year, but we got to pay for it on our own. We don't have any special elections.
But this one would be paid for by the county, because it's a, it's a regular election.
Correct. So that would be the goal. That would be the goal. Again, we're trying to do this fiscally responsible, in a, in a way that makes sense and timeframe, and we have opportunities to leverage our need, we're one of a few districts in the state, and they basically offered to do what it takes to help us get things done, and if we can save a decent chunk of money, we, this is certainly an opportunity we need to try and leverage.
Right. You know, and I fully agree, and I remember when they were here, and they had mentioned like that legislation that had been passed allowed for more dates, and they felt like it provided more flexibility, but there was not necessarily that understanding of like that additional cost. So hopefully, you know, we can certainly make that a priority, you know, in the relevant committees to work on that. And then just, this is a much more quick question, just the design study. Can you just sort of share what that is? Does it look at like the current number of students and what might have to change, or is it purely based on like the buildings themselves?
Yeah, so a design study, and we, it's the first step in looking at a project. So the architect would, and this, our architect of record is familiar with, they've built multiple schools with us. We would lay out, this is what the plan is in terms of, you know, full-day K and what its implementation looks like. This is what our classroom needs are. So, you know, if we were just talking about Oak Tree, we have this classroom in the media center, we have a classroom in the back of the stage, we have another classroom in the back of the stage. We have a need for two special programs that are potentially going to evolve over there. This is what we're looking at in terms of the programs that would occupy spaces, and depending on, you know, kindergarten has a certain threshold in terms of square footage, you know, distance from bathrooms and everything like that. They would take that information, layer it on top of the building, and come up with some different ideas, if we employ them to do that. And it's different configurations, different spots to do projects, different types of projects. And then we would take a look at it, we would make a decision ultimately of what projects made sense, what projects met our needs, which ones were most fiscally responsible, and go from there. And that, and that's comparable to what we do when we look at building, you know, a brand-new elementary school. There's multi-floor versions, there's single-floor versions, there's, you know, different configurations and things. So it's basically different versions, different ideas of how to, how to do a project, based on your needs, you know, of the project.
Do you have concerns or concerns?
I'm also going to first ask about the strategic plan update, and then I'll go to the kindergarten. Dr. Lehman, you mentioned that we, for the MTSD Portrait of a Graduate, you mentioned that we have seen the various tools out there. I thought we had already gone through a PD on that. So we've not, have, we've already done it. So we identified a tool, and we did a PD for some staff members on that?
So, no, so the, what we did is, we went and we met with each of the vendors. So we reached out, we got proposals for how much it would cost to do different versions and variations of a portrait of a graduate. And some of them are multi-year, three- to four-year projects that are hundreds of thousands of dollars with them onsite doing training and everything down. of dollars with them on site doing training and everything down to, you know, minimal cost. And then you can pick and choose from anything in between.
And you have an identified one, yeah?
No, well, we've kind of narrowed it down to one realistic, manageably cost piece. We're kind of looking at the survey side of it as opposed to onsite facilitating discussions and things like that.
Okay. So there are all these teachers, and you did mention community surveys, and our students will equally be involved in this project?
Yep. Yeah, the Portrait of a Graduate is a community project, so it would be, yep.
So includes all aspects of our community.
Which is why, you know, I'd say survey, but it's more than just students, staff. It would be a community survey, it's input from, you know, what is the vision, what is the graduate of Monroe Township High School look like? You know, and it's not necessarily, there could be a couple different thoughts about what, you know, the outcome looks like.
So when can we start to see some work through our committees on this? When can we expect some?
I would expect something later this year.
Later this year?
Yep.
Okay. All right. Moving on to the full day K, the 500,000 that we've received, our due date to use that money is June of '26? We have to use...
The end of the year.
To get reimbursed, right? We're going to get reimbursed that money, or is it already in our account?
We have it.
We have the money. So would we need to furnish them with projects that were used to cover it?
Yes. We have to report to the state, I believe it's towards the end of January, about the plan and the timeline of what we're going to do with the funding.
So whatever we plan, we need to let them know by?
Yes.
So you mentioned something about teacher setup. That money cannot go towards that at all?
So that's curricular materials. So we're, no, we're talking about capital would be desks, chairs, technology, you know, bit walls, roofs.
Is it a conversation for the board to have with our representatives to allow us to use it in a different way? Because i- is it possible? Like I'm, I'm trying to wonder, like Senator Greenstein was, you know, instrumental in helping us, you know, push this ass forward. I'm not sure if she understands that the money we've been given is with these conditions. Would she be able to, I'm just wondering out here, I'm thinking out loud, is it possible to ask our legislators to allow us to use this money differently so that pathway 2026 will be a reality because we then might have enough money to start in 2026? Right? Because we're finding ways to use the money indirectly in those buildings, but not directly towards, you know, kindergarten. And I, I can already see that that 500K is going to, at least for the first year, that 190 that comes from UC, like in some ways in my head, I can balance that number, not that we can use it that way, but for teacher setup or construct, you know, construction we can use this for, but anything else, like even if it means going out to an election in March for extra funding, which you said is not money that we have, it would be fiscally responsible, but if we could use this money for that?
You could, you could ask the, your legislators for possibly some special legislation that would be applicable to schools that have those grants and maybe can re-characterize the way that they might be used. That might be worthwhile to have a conversation about the possibility of special legislation.
So Ms. DePain, if you could start this conversation with Senator Greenstein, that we are being limited in the way we can use this money.
I have a question.
And it would give us a lot of flexibility if...
I did speak to her recently. I saw her at an Indian Day picnic that I attended, and I thanked her for the money personally, and she said, I hope you're using it for kindergarten.
We want to use it for kindergarten, is what you need to tell her now.
So I said, yes, we are, but I will definitely give her a call. Also, there's Senator DeAngelo, we can go, you know, and ask him. There are other people in legislative that we can, I mean, we can write to personally and say, I'm a member of this Board of Education, and we are getting this much money, but we could use a little bit more. I mean, I don't, I, that's what I was going to do. I was going to write my own letter and just say...
We could use more and allow us the freedom to not, not only assign it to capital, but anything that is going towards kindergarten setup.
Can I just ask the board, is the board okay? And is the board authorizing Ms. DePain to reach out to the legislators on behalf of the board?
I had a question.
Yeah.
Before making that decision. First, the way I viewed it in my head that this would work is that the administration would identify projects, and then rather than using the money they budgeted for, for those projects, they would use this $500,000, and then it leaves $500,000 open in the budget for kindergarten.
No, that doesn't how it works, because those projects are, if you're just taking care of it because we have that money in the bank, we would have otherwise not done those projects. Do you understand what I'm saying?
Is this something that the administration feels that needs to happen with the legislature? Is there a plan?
So, so here, here's my thought on it. If we are looking to allocate a one-time state aid award to something that is a, going to be an ongoing item in the budget, that is, concerns me, because we can cover it for one year, what happens the next year? Right? So that would be, you know, a curricular material purchase is not a one-year, it's a, it's a one-time purchase, but it's not an annual expense. A teacher salary is an annual expense. So I would not be comfortable taking a one-time state aid award and applying it towards an annual expense, because then we're going to be at a disadvantage trying to maintain it, right? So we're going to be in the same situation next year, which is why we want to go through the budgeting process and embed this, potentially embed this in the budget, so it's a sustainable piece. When it comes to curricular resources, we have a cycle of replacing curriculum materials and documents and things. So as we go through the budgeting process this year, we had a heavy lift last year. We can look at this coming year, and it may be a, not as heavy of a lift. So that allocation we had last year, we can very, very potentially cover any one-time expenditure on curriculum materials embedded in the budget this year.
But if we got that permission, we wouldn't have to look in our pocket, because that lift can be taken by the $500,000 that has been already given to us, right?
Correct. Yep.
Just to clarify, because I think I understood what you were saying, the $500,000 that we got, she did hope that we would use it for full day kindergarten, but it was on, when, like the actual amount was for capital projects, right? It was not earmarked for that one thing. Okay.
It was assigned generally to capital.
Right.
Yep. It wasn't capital...
That would clear up my...
K-specific.
Okay.
But every time she sees me, she said, that's for full day kindergarten, right?
Just say yes.
And I say, no, I say yes all the time to her. I say, of course, yeah, it's going.
I have a feeling that she probably is not aware of the, you know, what we're, the limitation that we're dealing with. And maybe she'll work for us if she becomes aware that we cannot, like the very simple statement that we cannot buy any kindergarten-related curriculum from this money because it is earmarked for capital.
It's too limited, right, yes.
Well, also, it's, curriculum is recurring, so he doesn't want to spend it on recurring.
I get his point, but like he said, it's, we can look at, look for it in our budget because last year we did a heavy lift, so we might not need that 500. But then we could look for something else in our budget if we could use this money for the curriculum, right? You know what I'm saying? Like that money could go towards another, you know, another expense at the software or new technology or whatever it is. We can, when they do the budget philosophy, they'll have so many needs that are going to get struck out, but something could get lucky because we can, you know, allocate some of this money. My other question, I'm going to move on.
Ms. Borah, I just wanted to follow up on the, the letter.
Yes, sorry, yes, go ahead.
So when you mentioned the, the special legisla, like, my understanding is any piece of legislation has to be voted on by the full state legislature, right? It's not just our...
And signed by the governor.
Right. So this is, it's not just asking, like for, for our individual legislators, we can ask them, you know, to...
If they would sponsor special legislation.
Right. But then I think what we also may want to do is reach out to the other districts possibly that don't have full day kindergarten, that may be dealing with similar things, because what we've been told also is that there, a lot of times there isn't support for some of these pieces of legislation because they don't, you know, affect as many other school districts. So I think the more statewide support we can garner, whether it's just our representatives, you know, initially sponsoring it, but then talking to the other boards to get their legislators on board too, would really help in terms of pushing that forward.
Can I ask you a quick question? I know you checked, and are there any other districts in Middlesex County that do not have full, full day kindergarten? You're the only one.
Not anymore.
Okay, not anymore.
Um, Millstone is in Monmouth, it's really close to us, but I believe it's technically Monmouth County.
Yes. I was just curious, because I know you always check and check and check, so I wanted to make sure. So we're the only district in Middlesex County that does not have full day kindergarten.
Right, but the legislative districts are broken up very uniquely, right?
Right, yes.
Like East Brunswick is a different district, and South Brunswick's a different district. So, you know, I think there's 40 legislative districts, so at least getting some statewide support would, would really help. I do like the idea of writing a letter on behalf of the board to...
I have to ask everybody if that's okay, you know?
Let's get a motion.
We need a motion to have, you know...
To authorize Ms. DePain to contact the legislator with regard to the potential use or different use of the funds that have been earmarked to the district.
I can make that motion. Should I just repeat what you said?
Do you prefer that I speak to her? Because I do have her phone.
How about communicate with her?
I know, but I'm just asking. Communicate with on any, any way that I have.
I'm, I'm sorry, I just, I'm confused, because I thought that we can use this for any capital project. So what's the letter asking?
Ms. Borah asked...
If it could be re-characterized.
If it could be re-characterized, yes.
So that we could use it for teacher setup, like our curriculum material that we might need any extra, whatever extra cost besides capital project.
Right. She wanted to see if we could get permission to use it for other costs other than capital.
Right now we can use it for design studies and tables and chairs, and like Dr. Lehman said, for coolers or HVACs in that area, but we can't use it for any curriculum related, we can't, you know, like he said, you could use it for teacher salary this year, but then not, we cannot, right? Now we cannot.
Mr. Zeichner, he's got his hand.
Maybe I'm a little bit confused here. I just, I'm trying to hear everyone, but my understanding is that we're still going to have a bill to pay when it comes to '27. Whenever you implement a kindergarten program, you're still going to have that money to pay. So whether you brand it under something else, you're still going to need $500,000 for capital expense. I mean, so what's the difference of rebranding the thing? I mean, you're still going to need the money for capital. Am I correct here, Dr. Lehman, in terms of...
I think, I think the idea on the table is to provide more flexibility.
So you, you want the flexibility in it?
It wouldn't, it wouldn't hurt. I mean, if we could pay for curriculum materials, that would certainly assist. Again, I would not recommend picking up an annually reoccurring expense because it's a one, you're, you are correct in the sense of saying that that would, is going to occur again in the following year and the following year after that. But a one-time expense that's not under the capital umbrella would provide us flexibility of spending it.
Okay, but not necessarily for staffing?
No, the staffing is an annual piece. Yeah, we talked about that.
Staffing is a totally separate issue, obviously.
Yes.
Okay. I'm fine.
So we, we can get a little bit more flexibility by asking.
Yeah, that's what you're asking for, is a little bit more flexibility with the money that was given to us.
So I would like to make a motion to allow Ms. DePain to contact our legislatures, to ask for more flexibility for the money allocated to Monroe Township for kindergarten.
And I'll second that.
Thank you.
I have a comment? No, we have to vote.
I know.
Okay. Personally, I think I would want to wait to see what you come up with during the budget. You said that you would have something for January, and then maybe make the decision then.
Can I make a suggestion?
Mm-hmm.
We're entering a lame duck session.
Yeah.
And this is the time when stuff gets thrown in. And so I would suggest that the call or the communication be made sooner than later, because the district may want to capitalize on the fact that the legislature is where it is right now.
And also by January, we need to tell the DOE how we are spending the $500,000. So we are already, you know, we're, if we get to know before that, then we can actually say we're also spending it on some curriculum material. But otherwise, we have to stick to the capital items.
And so, we, I want to move on from this. I'm still not understanding, if we used that money...
I think we need to...
Well, we can do a discussion on this, right? So what, I guess it doesn't hurt, I'm just not understanding the reason, because if we use that money for capital projects and it opens up something else, opens up money in our budget that we have, then we can utilize that money, you know, if we obviously approve it or things of that nature for the use of full day kindergarten. I, I don't think this hurts, I just, I'm not sure what the, the reasoning and the rationale for it is. I did want to perhaps maybe modify the, the motion if there, you know, if you're friendly to that, because I was, knowing that it's a lame duck session, like to ask the legislator to move forward on that bill for the November elections that allows us to do additional proposal questions in November for the following year. I can put this on the list agenda for next month, but it's already September.
Yeah. So... I can second the motion to modify, if you want to add both the conversations to the same conversation.
Can I just make a suggestion? I would suggest that you just withdraw the motion and then we make a fresh one.
I withdraw my motion.
And then Ms. Ratner, you're going to make a motion?
I'm going to make a motion for, on behalf of the board, a letter to be written to our legislators in support of modifying the $500,000, what's it called? Allocation that, from the budget to be used for, for any purposes for kindergarten, as well as for pushing forward, I guess, encouraging our legislators to move forward on its A2784 S2548, which would allow the school districts to utilize November for a separate proposal for the following year.
I second that.
Do we have to take that?
Ms. Ratner, it was, it, you said a letter, Ms. DePain asked for the ability to communicate, which would be a phone as well. So if you could just modify, and I hate to do this, it sounds silly, but...
No, I understand, I just, so, I mean, and I, I think there can always be follow-up by phone call, but I, I do feel it's important to have a written document as well. I, I think...
Which all do both.
Okay. Multiple forms of communication? I, I, Mr. Weiss, would that be too vague?
No, I, I just...
I understand what you're saying.
I would go with communicate.
Communicate, okay.
Yeah, and then that covers everything.
And we had a second by Ms. Borah.
No, no.
Mr. Zeichner, you were the first, you were the first second, I'm sorry, we have to...
I'm fine, no, no, it's not a problem. Nope, nope, I'm fine with it.
We have to take a vote. Yeah. Roll call.
Yep.
Yes, Ms. Alvarez?
Yes.
Ms. Aziz?
Yes.
Ms. Borah?
Yes.
Mr. Piero?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
Yes.
Ms. Sharma?
Yes.
Mr. Tufano?
Yes.
Mr. Zeichner?
Yes.
Ms. DePain?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So I'm going to proceed with a few more updates, and then we will move on to the recommendations. So just a notification, we have our second annual Monroe Township School District Classic Car Show this Saturday here at the high school, so we welcome everyone to attend. It's presented by the Booster Club, and we're very excited about seeing all the classic cars and not-so-classic, super new and shiny cars as well. So please come out and support us and our athletic programs. And in terms of recommendations, personnel member, 10 vote, it's recommended that the board approve the attached personnel items A through Z, A through Z.
Motion?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Is there any discussion? Ms. Allen?
Yes. Ms. Alvarez?
Yes.
Ms. Aziz?
Yes.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Mr. Piero?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
Yes. Recuse on letter K, number five, and letter W, number 22 for Mr. Ratner.
Okay. Ms. Sharma?
Yes.
Mr. Tufano?
Yes.
Mr. Zeichner?
Yes.
Ms. DePaine?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Personnel, nine-member vote. It's recommended that the board approve the attached personnel items AA through BD.
Motion?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Ms. Allen?
Yes. Ms. Alvarez?
Yes to all. Abstain on AW, number two.
Okay. Ms. Aziz?
Yes.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Mr. Piero?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
Yes.
Ms. Sharma?
Yes.
Mr. Tufano?
Yes.
Mr. Zeichner?
Yes.
Ms. DePaine?
Yes.
Motion passes.
So under Board Action, 10-member vote. It's recommended that the board approve the attached Board Action items A through L.
Motion?
Second.
I'd like to make a motion to table. Item related to Dr. Chanley on letter A until after the closed session.
I'll second it.
Any discussion?
So it's the vote, roll call now on the motion to table.
Motion to table.
Okay. Ms. Alvarez?
Yes.
Ms. Aziz?
Yes.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Mr. Piero?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
Recuse due to conflict.
Okay. Ms. Sharma?
Yes.
Mr. Tufano?
No.
Mr. Zeichner?
Yes.
Ms. DePaine?
Yes.
Motion passes.
There was a, I'm sorry. It was tabled.
So Board, Board Action, nine-member vote. It's recommended that the board approve.
Oh, hold on. We didn't do, we're doing.
We have to do the vote.
For the rest of the 10-member vote, right?
Right.
And I had, I just had a couple of questions. So I guess the first one, and this is on the 10-member and the nine-member, but I see that there's the Title I School Parent Involvement Policy. I guess if you can just share a little bit more about that. I'm assuming it's at all of the schools where we are eligible for Title I, but is this involving all of the parents or is it certain parents? I guess just a little bit more about what's involved.
So it's a process that they go, the Title I Schools go through. The Title I Schools for this year are Mill Lake, Woodland, and High School. Previously, maybe two years ago, Brookside was also a Title I School. So annually, what the schools are doing now is they're updating this. It's quote-unquote "policy." It's really an annual plan to engage the community members from the school in terms of what the potential needs are to support the students in those schools. We've engaged anywhere between probably 40 to 50 students per grade level, K to three, a little less in fourth and fifth grade. And then at the high school last year, the Title I funds were allocated towards staffing to support the MTSS process towards the Title I students in ninth grade. This year, we're expanding to ninth and 10th grade. So.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. I don't know if we had a motion on that, on.
We did.
Did we have a second?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And tabling that part?
That's still.
Okay.
Any other discussion on that? Ms. Allen?
Ms. Alvarez?
Yes.
Ms. Aziz?
Yes.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Dr. Peck? Oops, I'm sorry. Mr. Piero was on my list. Ms. Ratner?
Yes, however, I need to recuse on letter A for Mr. Snyder.
Okay. Ms. Sharma?
Yes.
Mr. Tufano?
Yes.
Mr. Zeichner?
Yes.
Ms. DePaine?
Yes.
Motion passes.
So now we're at the nine-member Board Action. It's recommended that the board approve the attached Board Items, Action Items, M through S.
Motion?
M through S.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Zeichner, seconded. Any discussion? Ms. Allen?
Yep. Ms. Alvarez?
Yes.
Ms. Aziz?
Yes.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Mr. Piero?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
Yes, however, I recuse for Mr. Lurie on letter M.
Okay. Ms. Sharma?
Yes.
Mr. Tufano?
Yes.
Mr. Zeichner?
Yes.
Ms. DePaine?
Yes.
Motion passes.
That concludes my report.
Thank you very much, Dr. Lehman. Now we have the business administrators' report.
It is recommended that Board Action Items A through I be approved by consent roll call under a 10-member vote.
Motion?
Make a motion.
Motion?
Second.
Wait, one second.
Okay.
Now I'd like to make a motion to table on item B, check number 9582, for a discussion in closed session.
Second.
I'm sorry.
It was seconded.
Yes, I'm sorry. Any discussion? Ms. Allen?
Yes. Ms. Alvarez?
Yes.
Ms. Aziz?
Yes.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Mr. Piero?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
Recuse due to conflict.
Ms. Sharma?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Ms. Sharma. Yes?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Mr. Tufano?
No.
Ms., Mr. Zeichner?
Yes.
Ms. DePaine?
Yes.
Motion passes. So we have to go back to the 10-member.
I'm sorry. One second. Ms. Bora has a question?
I had a comment and a question. I do want to thank all the organizations that are donating money for different enrichment services, specifically the Monroe Falcons Wrestling, which is donating a large sum of money sponsoring the MTHS wrestling mats. I was just curious, Monroe Falcons Wrestling, is that the township wrestling club?
Recreation wrestling.
It's incredible that they have been able to make such a generous donation to the high school program. So, thank you.
Anyone else have any comments? Ms. Ratner?
Yes. In alignment with that, I also did just want to mention the other two sponsors, which are the MTA and Ink Therapy as well. There was also a donation from a resident, Mrs. Josephs, for a piano to the high school. And then I did just want to mention the, because this had come up at BG&amp;T, for letter I, the Troy and Banks Utilities thing. I did look at the document and it does mention that the amount that they are charging is only for things that we are not automatically receiving due to state statute or statute of limitations or things like that. So I'm glad to see that and hopefully, you know, we'll have a lot of success with it.
Okay. Any other discussion? Ms. Allen?
Yep. Ms. Alvarez?
Yes.
Ms. Aziz?
Yes.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Mr. Piero?
Yes, I'd like to abstain on letter B, check number 9562.
Okay. Ms. Ratner?
Yes, I'm going to recuse on the bill list and the addendum for, due to conflict, on any payments, claims, and bills for Dr. Chanley, Dr. Lehman, Dr. Higgins, Mr. Ratner, Ms. Francis, Ms. Abruzi Lithgow, Mr. Lurie, Mr. Snyder, Methesel, and Werble, and Mr. Rubin.
Ms. Sharma?
Yes, but I would like to abstain for letter B.
Mr. Tufano?
Yes.
Mr. Zeichner?
Yes, except I would also like to abstain for letter B.
Okay. And Ms. DePaine?
Yes, and I'd like to abstain on check number 9562 and letter B.
Okay, motion passes.
Can I also?
Mr. Zeichner, you have a comment?
Emphasize that not just the bill list B, but check number 9582.
Yes, yep, okay.
Oh, and this.
That was tabled.
I do.
Any other discussion? Questions? Ms. Allen?
Are we doing?
This board president's report.
Oh, no.
Oh.
Oh, I'm sorry. That concludes my report. Yes, we did.
I'm sorry. I apologize.
Motion passes, and that concludes my report. Thank you.
Did we do the nine-member Board Action? Was that just now? I thought that was the.
It was, yeah.
Oh.
But, so we were doing nine-member, but the abstainment was happening on the 10-member.
Okay, wait.
Yeah.
The letter B was already done.
Yeah, that's right.
I thought so, so I wasn't sure why people, so there's no need for.
I'm pretty sure that we were going, because we did the roll call to table one item. Then we were doing the rest of the items, which is what I thought we were doing, right?
So we're on the nine-member.
That was a 10-member vote.
Right, so we're on the nine-member.
Now we're on the nine-member.
Yes.
See, that's why.
Okay.
It was a nine-member vote.
Okay.
Okay.
So do we have a?
We'll do, Ms. Allen?
Did we have the motion and the?
There was a motion.
Motion by?
Second.
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Ms. Alvarez?
Yes.
Ms. Aziz?
Yes.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Mr. Piero?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
Yes.
Ms. Sharma?
Yes.
Mr. Tufano?
Yes.
Mr. Zeichner?
Yes.
Ms. DePaine?
Yes.
Motion passes, and that concludes my report.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
My report tonight is, I just want to thank everyone in this district who helped make the opening of our schools this year a complete success. From top to bottom, I spoke at the opening day and to see everybody that came back happy to be here and be back in their positions. And we're happy to have them because this school district only runs well because of who is in our buildings. So I want to thank them. I also have from Mr. Ryback, Steve Ryback, who is the Chair of the Monroe Ed Foundation. He wanted me to thank Dr. Kevin Higgins for all his support and help with the Monroe Ed Foundation project that's coming up. And it is October 5th. It's the first annual Tricky Tray. And the money goes to scholarships or grants for teachers in order to put things back into their classrooms, different ideas. And I think it's, he wanted me to mention it because unfortunately, he could not make it tonight. I want to say thank you to Mr. Tag. It seems like he's one of our unsung heroes. He is always here, BG&amp;T, he's wonderful. I think he was on top of Aflo Garth all summer. So I mean, I was hoping he was here tonight to thank him personally. But we seem to miss him because all of our buildings run well and things done in our buildings are because of Mr. Tag. So I want to thank him for all he does for us. And that's my report for this evening. Oh, I wanted to wish everyone a happy Rosh Hashanah, which is on 9/22. And also Yom Kippur, we are sending our thoughts for Yom Kippur because I know that it's a day of atonement. So in the Catholic religion, we have to go every week for atonement. But it's nice that you can do it once a year. So our thoughts are with you for your day, and that's my report. Is there other Board of Education business to be discussed tonight, Ms. DePaine?
I just want to quickly say congratulations to the entire staff of middle school. Like one of our student board members shared, this is a huge accomplishment, number 87 out of almost 1,500 schools in the state. Fifth-largest school, to be able to rank that high is incredible. It's not one person, it's a team of people out there. Of course, the students contribute too, but to run that building, which has been one of our most challenging buildings in the time that I've been in Monroe, so efficiently and to rank that high is a testament to everybody that has worked on that building. So congratulations. Thank you.
Ms. Alvarez?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to allow Ms. Aziz to revote on agenda item related to HIBs from the August 27th meeting.
I'll second it.
Okay, so if I can, under Roberts' rules, in order to change a vote, there needs to be unanimous consent. And so to the extent that a vote is taken and it's not unanimous, then Ms. Aziz cannot change her vote.
Do you want to explain why?
Yes, I accidentally voted on item C a few hours after I got sworn in and I had intended to abstain.
Can you explain what you voted for now that you want to change it?
Yes, it's in Superintendent's Board Action Section, item C, related to HIBs. And I had intended to abstain, and I want that to be on the record.
Okay, all right.
Any questions, discussion?
Questions or consent?
Roll call?
Okay.
This is, so if your vote yes, it's to allow Ms. Aziz to change her vote. If you vote no, it's to not allow her to change her vote. And one no, the whole thing fails.
Okay. Ms. Alvarez?
Yes.
Ms. Aziz?
Yes.
Ms.?
Do I have to recuse from it? Do I have to recuse from it myself or recuse?
You can vote on that.
So you're voting. Okay. Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Dr. Peck? Mr. Piero?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
Yes.
Ms. Sharma?
Yes.
Mr. Tufano?
No.
Okay. Mr. Zeichner?
Yes.
Ms. DePaine?
Yes.
So motion does not pass.
If I can, board members, I believe that with regard to the bill list, some board members possibly may have inadvertently voted no on the entire bill list. And in that case, we may have a problem paying our bills this month. So to the extent that anyone may not have realized what they were doing when they did it, if anyone wants to change their vote, we should have a discussion about it.
Yes, definitely.
Ms. Allen, can I, we just get a clarification? The check that was tabled, what was that number?
9582.
Or 62?
Was tabled.
6282.
82, sorry.
Yes, 9582. And for this vote, there was 95, one, two, three people abstained on 9562. And one person abstained on the bill list.
So, so is it, you said only three people abstained on the one?
I have three people abstaining on that particular check number.
9562.
9562, and one person on just B on the bill list.
I thought it was more than.
Right, but then I didn't use the check number.
No, it wasn't.
So there's five recusals on, you said three people.
Did you recuse on the specific check number?
Well, I didn't because I started doing it.
But you had different names.
But you had.
Right, so the issue is that one of the concerns of conflict involves 9562, which means if there were, from what I can understand, if there were three people who.
9562 is not related to.
You tabled 9582, Ms. Alvarez, correct?
9582, okay, so.
And that was, can I ask for clarification? Like, this was the one that we tabled, so why would anybody's?
No, 9562. Oh, that's a different one. 9562 is not the one that was tabled, but I am conflicted on 9562.
Okay.
I abstained.
Okay. Right, but then.
But it doesn't.
There was three, you said there were three abstentions on 9562. One on all of B, and then myself, right? So that would be five. And you need six.
Right.
I'm sorry, but did you say just Methesel? Did you specifically say? Okay, because on the bill list, it said Lennox.
9562 says Mr. Rubin.
9562.
That's why I wanted to get this.
I initially abstained, and then I went back and I said, wait a minute. And then I said, I'm abstaining on that particular check number.
Yes, you went back after you voted.
Not 62, that one.
82.
82 was tabled.
But we didn't vote on 82.
82.
But that's his mistake. Not yet, but that's his mistake, he said.
Okay.
Which one was the one that we tabled?
Nine, five, eight, two.
Eight, two. And six, two is the one...
It's a different one.
That starts with eight, two again.
Right, okay, right.
Okay, so then there are five, right?
So it needed, it needed six yes votes, correct, Mr. Weiss?
Five, right?
Um, is it a nine-member vote?
It's a ten-member vote.
But there's some...
It's a ten-member... But he said it's full membership.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. We'll address it.
It's done.
We'll address it.
We'll address it. Okay?
Eight, two is tabled.
Eight, nine, five, eight, two.
Eight, two was tabled.
Ms. DePain, for other board business, really quick, I just wanted to keep it short, say, it's been a great start to the school year, looking forward to homecoming this weekend, anyone who's able to come out on Friday night to support the kids, both there and any of our other athletic events. I know Dr. Lehman does a great job of providing us with the schedule. Um, I know Saturday, there's the car show, as well as also the green fair that's taking place here, and then, I might have missed some of this when I was asking, so I apologize. I also know there's a lot of events that are coming up. There is the Education Foundation's Tricky Tray in October, and so really just a lot of things that are happening, so definitely try and support all of the organizations and the students that are doing things in the district.
Any other comments? Okay, we're going to the public forum of the meeting. You have four minutes to get, to stand by the podium, and if you have a question, please address the board.
Good evening, Rochny Sham, Monroe Township. Just wanted to say, very, very impressed with all of the work that's been done on full-day kindergarten. I think I speak on behalf of all of us, when I say it is about time, right? I think we've all been waiting for this for many, many years. I would definitely, I think the board felt this way as well, but I definitely think we should emphasize and go towards, you know, trying to do it in 2026, right? And I think that's really, that's really the goal, trying to do it as soon as possible because we're one of three. I'd like to not be an N of one, right, opening in 2027. So, just really want to commend the administration on all the great work. I'm sure many of you know I'm a candidate running for the Board of Education next year, and so I also commend you all because this whole campaigning thing, I don't know how I feel about it, but, you know, I give you guys a lot of credit for what you've done because you've all campaigned. But, um, one thing I will say is, I definitely feel like this meeting, I've seen, you know, you all work together, I've seen you all come to consensus. I think we have new board leadership, and I think that it is a good path forward for us to work together, collaborate, make good, make good, great decisions, so I thank you for that, and I just wanted to say, great job, so, thanks very much.
Thank you very much. Anyone else like to speak this evening?
Good evening, Chrissy Skirby, Monroe Township. A question about full-day kindergarten. Dr. Lehman, you said this year you moved approximately $200,000 from ECE, $197,000, something like that?
Hundred ninety, yep.
How much was the total revenue, though, from ECE? What is in that account as a total? Because I know we don't move the entire profit, I know we only move a certain amount each year, but how much does that profit each year?
I don't have that figure in front of me. We took most of the profit to transfer in to the budget.
So last year it only made 197?
A little, somewhere around there, so it was, yeah.
A little bit more, because I know previous years it was...
It was higher before.
Wasn't it up to like 600,000?
That's true.
It was. It was much higher in previous years, yep.
What is the reason for the, it's a, it's a program that expanded to Oak Tree, it's a program that has a waiting list. Falcon Care is full. Why would we go down from 600,000 to 197?
Do you want to take it? Do you want me to? So I can tell you, in general, we've seen costs for, so Falcon Care and ECE, so you have the before and after care program and the extended kindergarten program are under the same umbrella.
Okay, you could ask me, I just want to get through what I, other questions I had. And then as far as the timeframe, I mean, we did a lot of sitting here and talking back and forth and debating with each other, and what should we do with the money? What, should we ask for the money to be allocated for this? That is not the role of a board member, that should be coming from the administration. If Dr. Lehman and the administration feels that that money should be allocated for something else, then the administration should really be doing that. Where we go next, what we do next, that should all be recommendations coming from the administration. We sat here for over an hour, listening to you guys go back and forth with all these different ideas and, and comments, but honestly, those recommendations come from the administration. I think that's where this board goes awry a lot, because you think that you run the district, and you don't. The administration runs the district. Your job is to see that the district is run well. It's a big distinction that I don't think a lot of you understand at all. You know, it's been 135 days since you put Dr. Chanley on leave. We are paying an administrator to sit home getting full pay. She's attending the NJSBA conference next month in Atlantic City, paid for by the taxpayers. That's part of her contract. I'm assuming that those check numbers relate to her. Can you tell us what those check numbers, who those checks are made out to? That's public record, right? That's in the bill list. Can you tell me what those checks are that you all abstained on and that you're going to talk about? I'd like to know who they're for and what those payments are.
Ms. Skirby, my recollection is that the one check in particular is for, and correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Allen, is for Dr. Chanley's attorney submitted some invoices.
Correct.
And it's my understanding and recollection that that's the item that was tabled.
And you're debating whether or not you should pay for her attorney? That's absurd, that's part of her contract as well, that she has legal coverage. You are wasting taxpayer money, you are keeping somebody home that did nothing except do her job correctly here. She's beloved, she's missed, it's a travesty what you're doing, and I understand that, I guess at the beginning of the meeting, you all served a lawsuit, Mr. Zeichner, Ms. Usha Sharma, Ms. DePain, Ms. Alvarez, and Mr. Piro. I'm glad she's suing you guys, because what you've done to her and what you've done to our community is a disgrace.
Time is up, Ms., time is up for you.
It's a disgrace.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else wish to speak this evening? Seeing none, we're going to close this portion of the meeting, we're going into a closed session, and then we're coming back out to do some more voting. So if you'd like to stay, we're going to discuss some confidential matters in closed, and then make vote when we come out. All right? Is there a motion?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained?
So, members of the public, the board is going to be going into closed session for approximately forty-five minutes to discuss personnel matters and to receive attorney-client advice. The board will not be taking any action in executive session. At the end of executive session, the board is going to come back out into the public and take votes. So to the extent that members of the public wish to remain to see the votes as they occur, we'll probably be back in this room in forty-five minutes after executive session.
We need to appoint a secretary...
Yes.
To take notes?
Yes.
Ms. Alvarez said she didn't like wanting to...
I would prefer someone that's not named.
Yes. Ms. Ratner, Ms. Bora?
I can take, I can take the notes.
Oh, thank you very much.
Do I make a motion?
If the board is authorized.
I'll make a motion to appoint Mr. Weiss as the secretary for this closed session.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? We'll be back, thank you very much. We're good? Thank you very much. Thank you for those that waited. Make a motion to come out of closed session?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Abstained? No, anybody? Yes?
Ms. DePain, I would like to make a motion after the closed session on, in the light of the extra expenses that the district is starting to see, and also the fact that we, it's been over 120 days that Mrs. Chanley has been on administrative leave, and we are